If you're a person of color, or if you're a senior, or if you're somebody with a disability. But today, we say, "A city that comes together and hold hands." And I love seeing this, whether it's at a school, or whether it's on a bus, or whether it's in a park. You can't but see that L.A. is for everyone.
We celebrate all cultures. So if there is a Heritage Month, like right now, we're in Latino Heritage Month. We're celebrating the beautiful contributions of our Latino brothers and sisters. And so when we have Heritage Month celebrations and we lift communities to celebrate their heritage, we're sending a message of your supported, included, and valued.
That's why so many people around the world still come to the City of Los Angeles, because the diversity here, it makes the city so incredibly special.
I totally support the campaign of L.A. for All, especially because Los Angeles is one of the most diverse cities in the world. And a lot of the time, these smaller communities, these smaller herds of L.A. get to be overshadowed by bigger stories, things that tend to be more sensational. And I love events like this that are able to celebrate everyone of L.A.
When people stand up for their neighbors, when they see people being othered, it really is a validating thing, and it's empowering, and it's making a difference in our city. And we have many places in Los Angeles lit up to say that hate has no home in Los Angeles, and more specifically, that L.A. is for everyone.
Many times, small businesses fail because of their limited access to capital, but also because of misinformation and lack of expert knowledge. Council District 9 and the Small Business Administration are collaborating to help women and minority-owned small businesses receive the resources they need. Let's take a look.
We brought together resources collectively that you seldom see. SBA, Operation Hope, and Vermont Slosson coming together to deliver these much-needed services to Black-owned businesses, in this case, in Los Angeles, but over this entire country.
There are lots of opportunities in L.A. at this time, and we want to make sure that small businesses, minority businesses, businesses at risk have a chance to participate. And this provides those resources. We're excited about the collaboration at the federal level and local level, and also making sure that resources are available and accessible. We have to make sure that there is equity and opportunity.
The SBA is about delivering the promise of the American dream of business ownership to more Americans. Oregon Stanley did a study and found that there's a $4.4 trillion opportunity gap in our economy because they know that women and businesses owned by people of color don't achieve the same level of revenues or the same level of job creation as white-owned businesses because they are under-invested in.
We need Black businesses and Brown businesses and women-owned businesses and veteran-owned businesses, not just to be used to get contracts, but actually to be rewarded as the primes for contracts and make sure that they show up where the money is spent, not just when the application is put in.
$25,000 in services. They're yours. Don't walk past it. I know you don't believe in it as free. Believe it this time. It costs you nothing but your time.
People often ask me, "What's the biggest disparity for small businesses of color?" And I kind of take issues sometime with my colleagues. They say access to capital. And that's true. But equally as important is access to information. You can have all the money in the world, but if you don't know how to manage that money and make your business successful, it's all for naught.
Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson recently attended the groundbreaking of Serenity, a housing facility for seniors who are homeless. In collaboration with the South Side Church of Christ, CD8 will provide a permanent solution for homelessness with the creation of 50 affordable senior housing units. Let's take a look.
I'm welcoming you to the opening of Serenity.
Today, we're opening, breaking ground for construction of a senior housing facility for seniors that are now homeless in this neighborhood. We're going to get this built and move our neighbors off the street into housing. It's so important to the community. The only solution to homelessness is housing. This idea that you move them from block to block to block to block does not work and is ineffective, inefficient, and inhumane. Building housing is the only way, and this is what we're doing here. The South Side Church of Christ is leading the way.
The community will be impressed with what we are going to do for the community, and we hope that they'll yawn with us, all of the agencies that are working with us.
We're building 50 affordable senior units, and it's geared for homeless seniors, which is one of the most vulnerable populations when it comes to homeless housing, or housing period. And this project is a public-private partnership between the City of Los Angeles, the Los Angeles Housing Department, and the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles.
The project is going to be, again, serving not only our membership, our community, again, with what the programs that we already have, with what we're doing with youth, and then obviously pouring into our seniors, giving them a quality place to live as they transition in this part of their life.
One, two, three. Man, it looks like there's a lot of girls.
The most important part of the project is that a church in the community, it's been an institution, it's been here my whole life, stepped up when they saw a need in the community and said, "We're going to get something done, and we're going to do something about it." And they put up what is perhaps one of their most valuable earthly assets, and that's the land.
To inform and motivate its residents, Council District 15 organized a resource and job fair to bring information and career opportunities to the residents of Watts. Several city departments and private companies were busy carrying out job interviews and even onsite hirings. Check it out.
We're in Watts at another resource fair sponsored by the city and co-sponsored by several community organizations. I'm very grateful for this resource fair in our community because it brings together a lot of different agencies.
This event was put on by Council District 15 to help bring job opportunities as well as resources to the community of Watts.
Here we are on Success Avenue at our Watts Resource Fair, and I look to my left, I see Kaiser Permanente expanding. And we're talking about healthcare jobs. We're going to hire folks from Watts working at this expanded Kaiser Permanente.
There's some job interviews happening today and also some onsite hiring for folks, also sharing resources on different youth programs, different things going on in the city. We have LADWP here.
We have many people who live in our neighborhood who need information concerning access to healthcare, education, and programs to help service their family members. But they may not know where to go. But with this resource fair, everything is here in one place.
And so bringing something like this, it's encouraging. There's hope. You know, when there is that hope, you can have that motivation to do something.
Our program is benefiting the community in a way that we're finding automotive is being discontinued in a lot of high schools. Right now, in L.A. Unified School District, there's only six auto shops. So with that, there's really no programming in South L.A. or Watts area for automotive. So we're trying to bridge that gap.
We're here today representing the Rivera Community of Schools for L.A. USD. We have schools in and around the Watts area, and we want to make sure that our community is aware of the different programs we have.
I like being in the community and making a face-to-face connection with the community so that we can all feel like the City of L.A. is here for the city.
Councilmember Kevin DeLeon announced $5 million in funding for the community-led Heart of Highland Park Initiative to create pedestrian improvements. The funds, previously identified to build the 710 freeway, will be used to enhance the pedestrian environment in the center of Highland Park. Improvements may include new sidewalks, street lighting, street trees, and enhancements around the Veterans Monument. The focus of the initiative is to connect essential public amenities in the area of Highland Park centered around York Boulevard and Figueroa Street. To find out more about what is new in CD14, visit cd14.lacity.gov. The Los Angeles Police Department introduced a pilot housing incentive program for new recruits called Housing For Hires. The program subsidizes a portion of recruits' housing for up to two years after they are hired, covering time spent in the academy and training. Designed to help with the current shortage of LAPD officers, the program places recruits in eligible subsidized properties within the city. The costs of the subsidies are covered by the Los Angeles Police Foundation or by apartment-building landlords who discount rent. The program also allows recruits to live within the city and become familiar with the communities they will work with as officers. Visit joinlapd.com to learn about the benefits available to LAPD officers. The Los Angeles Department of Transportation's Residential Speed Hump Program will begin accepting new initial applications on October 6. Speed hump installation is intended to reduce incidences of excessive speeding on residential roadways with a speed limit of 30 miles per hour or less. Applicants are encouraged to review the updated info on the criteria for installation to determine if installation is appropriate and feasible. The application period will close when 375 applications, 25 in each council district, have been submitted. Find out more about how LADOT is working to create safer streets at ladot.lacity.org.
Did you know that the Watts Towers just turned 100? The centennial of this artistic L.A. landmark brought the community together in a multicultural celebration of dance, performance, music, and food. In addition, the Watts Towers Drum Festival and the Simon Rodeo Jazz Festival were also turning 40 and 45 respectively. Check it out.
We're celebrating a centennial, 100 years here in Watts, of the Watts Towers and also of this incredible art center, whether it's music, whether it's visual arts. You know, Watts isn't just one of the centers in Los Angeles. It is one of the capitals of the world of culture and of creativity.
Watts is very rich. Most people come down here looking for 1965. We're not 1965 anymore. We're very rich. There are more artists in all disciplines coming from the Watts area than anywhere else in Los Angeles.
We have many celebrations. It's 100-year anniversary of the Watts Towers. It's the 40th anniversary of the Watts Towers Drum Festival and the 45th anniversary of the Simon Rodeo Watts Towers Jazz Festival.
It's the people, it's the music, it's the food. It's the... just... it's just nice. And it's relaxing. You can just sit and relax and enjoy yourself.
For years, I couldn't come because I had to work. So I've been here the last, oh, four times they've had it, and I really enjoyed it. I enjoyed the drums. I just enjoyed the drums.
It just shows the malleableness of cultures, how cultures blend together. The brother that designed these Watts Towers was from Italy. He was an immigrant that came here from Italy, and he was a recycler before recycling was hip.
Uncle Sam, my Uncle Sam, Sabato Rodeo, he created this magnificent, mysterious, and unusual world monument right here in Watts, the Watts Towers.
It's a great day, more investment, more art, more people, and finally, we're back together.
Did you know that the city currently has four different types of recycling and trash bins? Blue, green, brown, and black. In presenting the launch of the Organic Ways Pilot Program, the L.A. Sanitation Department breaks down what items should go in each bin so we can all do our part to help the environment.
Currently, the city has four bins. We have the blue, which is for the recyclables. We have the green for the yard trimmings. And we have the brown. And then we have the trash, which is the black. Anything that doesn't go to the blue, the green, and the brown, it goes to the black or the trash. What goes into the blue are the mix papers, the cardboard, the cartons, the scrap metals, and the plastic. Make sure that all those materials must be clean, dry, so that it will not bring any contamination to the good materials that are already in the blue. The city has seven SAFE centers, and the SAFE is an acronym for solvent, automotive, flammable, and electronic. So we have seven locations strategically located within the City of L.A., and those materials can be dropped off to those locations. Right now, the only item that goes into the green bin is the yard waste. And when we have this Curb Your Food Waste Pilot Program, where the resident has the opportunity to recycle food waste, then they have the opportunity to put it into the green. And at the same time, when we have this phase two of the Organics L.A. program, we added like 22,000 households. The food that we put into the trash or the black bin, they go to the landfill. And once it goes to the landfill, it decomposes and produces greenhouse gas or the methane gas. And the methane gas is a significant contributor to the global warming.
The Elysian Valley Arts Collective teamed up with the city to host the Frog Town Art Walk to showcase its three pillars: art, nature, and play. Artists from all backgrounds presented their work in person and in an environment that supports diverse voices and representation. Let's take a look.
We're here at the Frog Town Art Walk, put on by the Elysian Valley Arts Collective and others, to share what the L.A. River Public Art Project has done and will be doing in the future. We're an organization that's dedicated to public art on the L.A. River as part of nature, art, and play.
Frog Town has been very gracious to host this art walk. In past years, it's been virtual because of a pandemic shutdown, but this year is our first year back, and we've had lots of traffic and lots of people checking out our artwork.
I think it's a wonderful way, as an artist, to be able to showcase their work. And I think it's a great way to bring people together in the community, and they can get out and have a fun day outdoors, having a great time.
We are a vehicle, we're a tool that artists can use to present their work. We're not being prescriptive to say it should be X and not Y. We are here to create an opportunity for a presentation of voices that might not be heard of.
It's been a great opportunity to be able to show our work in person. I know I myself, I haven't been able to have the public see my work in person. And this year, we've been able to host a lot of artists as part of this art walk, and I'm sure everybody feels the same way to be able to get out in the public again.
We have ideas about what a major public art project could be. We also have a tulip boat, created by Indigenous advisors and Indigenous people as part of the cultural richness of the river, an interpretation of the boats that we would have seen on the coast of Santa Monica, the Santa Monica Bay. So it's not just about art you might find in a museum or a gallery. I mean, we want art to be experiential. We want art to speak to the entire history of the river, from the very beginning until the future.
Our position and our mission and our advocacy is to see art along all 51 miles of the river. And to demonstrate what that would be like, we have commissioned artists over the last 10 years to do temporary and short-term installations and provide a vision for the whole community, for the whole region, for all of Los Angeles to look at and consider its impact on the river.
Want to hear and celebrate stories in both English and Spanish? That's what the Fourth Annual Los Angeles Libros Festival, a bilingual literary event for the whole family, was all about. Adults and children enjoyed lively and fun performances from artists that represent many voices in our city.
It's the Fourth Annual Los Angeles Libros Festival, and it's a bilingual literary festival for the whole family. And the reason it's so important is we want to celebrate bilingualism. We have authors and illustrators coming in. We have performers, music. We also have a partnership with La Libreria, the only bookstore in Los Angeles who specializes in children's and teen literature in Spanish. And so they are also able to come in and help us encourage people to read in whatever language they read.
The Los Angeles Libros Festival invited Skillful and Soffol Press, our independent publishing company from Whittier, California, to participate. And we were local authors and illustrators. And this afternoon, we shared our book, Mommy Tell Me Why I Am Radiant. Mami, dime porque soy radiante. And we read this to community at a bilingual storytime.
And we also shared our trilingual counting board book, and it's in English, Spanish, and Nahuatl. It's Hummerbird Colibril with Swiss music.
Chaka chaka chun. Estoy lavando mi calzón con agua y con jabón.
I think it's important for everyone to bring their kids because it's a library. Everyone should know how to read. Everyone should have the opportunity.
It's really important to be bilingual because that's where Los Angeles is today. She, Baloma, is actually in a bilingual kindergarten. So we want the opportunity to expose her in this casual, supportive space where it's very easy to access art, culture, the love. And so we love the opportunity to talk to the authors, the books that we read. So it's a blessing to have all this here, you know, for free.
Even though it's wonderful for parents to bring their children to the library as often as possible, if you're not able to, you can go to lapl.org. We have so many services online that if you can't make it to the library in person, we welcome you online as well.
We just appreciate our librarians and everyone who does all the work to put this together. We really appreciate you, and we'll continue to follow everything that's happening with this event every year.
The event is free, and everyone is welcome. Everyone is invited, so you can come and celebrate books and reading in any language you speak.
In our feature story this week, our own Anita Bennett sits down with the newly-appointed councilwoman for Council District 10, Heather Hutt. As the first Black woman representing the district, she discusses her hopes and goals for CD10. Let's hear this story.
Recently, the city council confirmed Heather Hutt to represent Council District 10. Now that she is on the council, Hutt is laying out her plans for the district, and she joins us now. So what plans do you have for CD10?
My plan is to use all the city resources possible to bring CD10 back to where it was. We're doubling down on the work that we're doing with our homeless population. Make sure our homeless neighbors are housed. When we got our homeless count, 1,300 people, and this was in February, were identified as unhoused in CD10. Between February and now, we have identified that just about 30% of those folks have been housed, and we'll continue to fight to make sure that they are housing-secure.
You are the first woman to represent CD10 and the first Black woman. What does that mean to you?
First of all, it is incredible that there hasn't been a woman here before. And for it to be me is a great responsibility. I have to show little girls of any color that they can do this. Because if you can see it, what? You could be it, right?
What has been the reaction to your appointment in the district?
People are really happy to have a voting member. They felt disenfranchised. They felt like it was taxation without representation. We have a vocal district, and they were the ones that reached out to council president and said, "Hey, we need a voting member." And that is really the trigger.
And Council President Nuria Martinez has also been very supportive.
Completely supportive. She certainly does understand the city and the complexities of all of it. I appreciate her leadership, and I'm really proud to be able to work with the council president.
Well, there is a lot of hope about the future in CD10, and we thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you for having me. I do want to say, if folks want to get in touch with our office, That's how you get in touch with us. That's how you can see what our updates are and our upcoming events.
Enjoy a performance from Dr. Pianist. Celebrate the culture of Jalisco without leaving L.A., or check out the L.A. Public Library's Creators and Residents Showcase. All this up next on Things to Do.
Have you ever wondered about the science behind the power of music to heal and unite us? That's what Dr. Pianist Makiko Harada has made her life's mission. Through collaborations with neuroscientists, she quantifies the benefits of music, which you can experience for free at the Platt Branch Library. An internationally renowned classical pianist, Makiko Harada will be performing a live concert, where the theme of the program is Stories Without Words. Attendees will be delighted with works by Chopin, Ravel, and Schumann, amongst many others. Makiko will be performing on a new Kawhi K300 piano, funded by the Friends of the Platt Library. Angelinos are welcome to attend this free live concert that will take place at the Platt Branch Library on Saturday, October 15, at 1:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. Celebrate your Mexican roots in pure Jalisco style at the three-day event Fiesta de Octubre at Pershing Square. The event is aimed at promoting Jalisco on an international level. During its duration, there'll be live performances from artists like La Arroyadora, amongst many others. Everyone can attend this free event to enjoy the culture, cuisine, music, drinks, and bonds between Jalisco and California. Fiesta de Octubre will take place at Pershing Square from Friday, October 14 through Sunday, October 16. For more details and to register for free, search for Fiesta de Octubre on eventbrite.com. The Los Angeles Public Library invites you to experience the artistry of their inaugural Creators and Residents program. This free showcase will feature new original work from photographer Quasi Boyd Bolden and visual artist River Garza. Rooted in the Black and Indigenous Tongva communities, respectively, the conversation between these two artists will cover their approach at art-making and how their views on the city inspired them. The event is open to everyone and will also include activities for all ages. It takes place at the Mark Taper Auditorium at the Central Library on Sunday, October 16, at 2:00 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more L.A. this week. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, there are a lot of people here that need to be heard today. A lot of people have come to this chamber is because they need to be heard. Let's listen to the folks who came, who need to be heard today. Let's listen to the folks who spent the time to come here today, who need to be heard, who deserve to be heard. Who have the right to have their voices heard today. That's why we're here today. We're going to hear from members of the public, we want to hear from you. Let's respect the folks who have come here today to be heard. To members of the public, this entire council is meeting today to work through these issues and let's respect people who showed up to give their voice to us.
Good morning everyone, everyone, please. Could I please ask for the opportunity for this meeting to begin so that we can speak and that you can speak to the issue that has brought you all here? Please let us call the roll, I would like to speak. Quick.
No roll with these two guys, no roll with these two guys. They can't, they don't belong here, no roll with these two guys, they gotta go, they gotta go. They can't take the road, no roll, no roll. There is no roll. They gotta go, there is no roll, this is an illegal meeting, this is an illegal meeting. Those two gotta go. Those two gotta go, get up now, get up now, get up now, leave now. Delion, you gotta go, Sadiel, you gotta go. This is an illegal meeting, not for these two guys, no roll, no roll, no roll for the council meeting. They gotta go.
So what we are asking is, for Sadio, if he resigns, we need him, alright, so the council cannot do any business unless officially resign.
No meeting unless officially resigned.
Mike walks in the country, they're gonna resign.
They're gonna resign.
There is no meeting unless they resign.
There's no meeting unless they resign. There's no meeting unless they resign.
Leave. Leave, De'lyon. Leave. 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 Leave.
This is an illegal meeting. They have to resign. They have to resign. You can't fucking say that to a baby. You can't talk to a baby like that.
And now, there's not gonna be any official meeting, only Mike can speak, because we don't, unless all three resign. Those three have to resign. We cannot have the city council meeting until they resign officially.
Let's allow the people who came here to give their voice to this issue the moment to speak. That is what we are here for today. People came here to say a few words. And let's give them the respect that they deserve in order to express themselves. We will hear every single public comment today. Everyone who filled out a card will be heard today. They gotta resign. They gotta resign. They gotta resign.
No meeting unless the three resign.
No meeting unless the three resign.
You don't give a fuck that Newism here. We want her resignation.
All three have to resign. All three have to resign. All three have to resign.
No racism.
Council cannot have its business. Council cannot do its business. We are going to have a meeting today. It will happen. Now, it can happen with everyone in the room. It can happen with everyone in the room, or, or we can have a meeting without any of you in the room. We're going to have a meeting. We are going to have a meeting today. We're going to have a meeting today. We want to hear from everyone who has filled out a speaker card today. And we will. We don't want to put you out. This is, this is your house and we want to hear from you. But we have to do this and let everyone have a chance to speak. I know, I know. We would like, we would like to hear from Councilmember Bonin. We would like to hear from Councilmember Bonin. Will you all make that possible for us? We would like to make... And after Mr. Bonin speaks, I implore all of you, let us proceed, let us proceed with this meeting so that everyone here can be heard. Everyone took time off so they could be heard today. So after Mr. Bonin speaks, we will proceed. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you. I, I, I really, really do not want to be here today. I, I want, I want to be home with my family right now. I, I am, but, but, but I, I want to say a few words. I am still trying to wrap my head around everything that was said and everything that is happening. My husband and I are both raw and angry and heartbroken and sick for our family and for Los Angeles. And as an Angelino, like most Angelinos, I am, I am reeling from the revelations of what these people said. Trusted servants who voiced hate and bile. Public officials are supposed to call us to our highest selves. And these people stabbed us and shot us and, and cut the spirit of Los Angeles. It, 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 it gave a beat down to the heart and the soul of this city. But before anything else in the world, I'm a dad. And I'm a, fuck. I, I am a dad who, I'm, I'm a dad who loves his son in ways that words cannot capture. And I take a lot of hits. And, and hell, I know I practically invite a bunch of them. But my son? Man, that makes my soul bleed and it makes my temper burn. And I know I'm not alone because Los Angeles has spoken and it feels the same way. When, uh, when, when the LA Times called me on Saturday, I was out of town and I was away from my family. And the reporter summarized some of what was on the tapes. And my first instinct as a, as a father was to implore them, don't run the story or at least be vague, please say made racist remarks about my son. But I didn't want to see the specifics in print. I didn't want him to have to hear them or, or read them someday. And I also knew that the tapes contained much more, learned even more in the past couple of days, much more than the comments about my son. And as the, uh, as, as the, the white father of a black child, you, you stumble and you, and you, and you, and you fuck up and you, you, you try to do your, your best to be a parent and an ally. And I get it wrong a lot, I get it right sometimes. I, I knew that I did not want this story about virulent anti-black racism to be centered on an angry white dad. And you know, I was afraid this was gonna be in California section. It's been in international news. You know, th- these words, they cut and, and, and they stung. You know, I know that I can never really know or comprehend or feel the, the weight of the, the, the daily relentless racism, anti-black racism that my son is gonna face. But man, I know the fire that you feel when someone tries to destroy black boy joy. Man, it's a rage. And you know, my husband and I were both raised at a time when, as gay men, we didn't think that we would be married or that we would be allowed to have kids or that we'd be allowed to have a family. Because our relationships and our families were considered illegitimate. And a lot of what on these tapes stung. But over the past two days, I've heard about a lot more than, than, than me and my family. I've heard about attacks on the Oaxacanio community. Uh, I've heard the homophobic tropes, uh, I've heard anti-Semitic remarks, uh, I've heard, uh, uh, incredible coordinated efforts to disenfranchise blacks and renters and to weaken the, the voice of progressives. And, and to undermine anyone who tries to do coalition building. And it, it's overwhelming and, uh, I, I am outraged and, and I'm, I'm sickened by it. There's, there, there are a lot of people who are now asking for forgiveness. And, and a- a- asking for forgiveness is a good first step, but, well, it's a second step because first, first, you must resign and then ask for forgiveness. But, but, but let me be clear. People should not ask me for forgiveness because, um, I, I can't forgive them because it's not my prerogative. It's the prerogative of a boy who is too young to really understand what the hell is going on. And when he's older, maybe when he's in high school, you can seek his forgiveness. In the meantime, people that, 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 that love him are gonna try to help him understand when a schoolmate mentions something or when a well-meaning stranger approaches us on the street to say how horrified they are by what happened. Or, and it kills us to know this is gonna happen a lot sooner than, than we'd like, when he does a Google search and he reads the actual words that were said. You know, and it's not my place to forgive the slurs and, and the treatment of the Oaxacanio community or the API community or the Jewish community. It's not my place to forgive the coded comments against the gay community or forgive the overwhelming, casual, joyful, anti-black raceness of the entire conversation. And it's not my place to forgive that coordinated effort to disenfranchise all these communities and, and all these people. Don't get me wrong, I, 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 I want, I, I want to be able to forgive the offenses against me and my family and I, I want to lead with, with love and generosity and, and model the world we need to create. And I promise you, I'll try. But, uh, to do so, first today, I need to focus on love. I need to focus my mind and my heart and my family's attention on all those who have shown kindness and love to my, my wounded and hurting family. I especially want to thank Marquise and Isaac Bryan and Karen Bass and Melina Abdullah and all of the parents of, of, of black and brown babies who have reached out with a focus not on me but on my son. And I want to thank all of the other LGBTQT parents who reached out. Those people know how to put families first. I want to thank Mayor Garcetti and Nithya and Aunicez and Ugo for their friendship and for their love and for their moral support. It has meant more than I can say. But from so many others, literally thousands of people from around the world. And I want to thank everybody who has reacted with fury and indignation. I, I am... On these tapes, I have heard the worst of what Los Angeles is. From you, I am hearing and I'm seeing what the best of Los Angeles is. This city is strong and this city has a very big heart. And Los Angeles is gonna heal. We can be, we can be, we can be, with a lot of work, a city where our reality matches our aspirations. We need to be a city that doesn't just issue a statement of indignation over something like this, but does the work to make sure that no little black boy, no young Latina, no kid anywhere hears this and that no community feels disenfranchised and disempowered. I'm almost done. That, 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 that work, that work is never done and it is always, always renewing. It's, it's, it's daily. There was moments with the Tom Bradley Coalition where that was real. There were moments in the, in the multiracial coalition that elected Antonio Villarrosa where that promise was there. In, 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 in Karen and in Marquise and in Nithya and in, in Aunicez and in Isaac and in Ugo, I see the incredible promise of that coming in Los Angeles. A, a, a powerful, heart-led, multiracial crop of young progressives who are determined to build coalitions. The power is there and the heart is there and the fortitude is there. And I, I have more than hope. In, 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 in the pain and all of this, I have more than hope. I have, I have faith that that can happen. Thank you.
Mike, thank you for your courage. Thank you for expressing your sorrow. We share it with you, Mike. And you, you can tell in this chamber, you're surrounded by people who are here for you, who are here for Sean, who are here for Jacob. We must carry on so people can be heard. Today is Tuesday, October the 11th. We'll pause for as long as we need to. We'll pause for as long as we need to. Colleagues. Colleagues, yesterday... Yesterday. Colleagues, yesterday we celebrated our fifth... All right, seeing as we're not gonna be able to proceed with what we're seeing right now, I will have to call a recess. We'll, we'll start this meeting again once we're able to regain order in the chambers. So we're on recess and we'll start this meeting until we regain order in the chambers. Streffan?
Okay, just to be clear, we're taking a recess to regain order in the chambers.
Start with that. But for that to happen, we need order in the chambers. We need order in the chambers in order to hear from people who are here and have taken time to provide public comment. In order to do that, we need order in the chambers.
So we would like to begin with public comment. If members of the public would like to speak, we can start with that. So if members of the public would like to address the council, we can start with public comment, but we need to clear the podium to do that.
In order to do public comment, we'll need to clear the hall and make the podium available for public comment in order to accomplish that. We have plenty of people who are here to provide public comment, but we have to have order in the council chambers in order to accomplish that.
If the public would like to address the council individually, we can start with public comment. But we need to clear the podium if we're going to take public comment. So we'd like to, so we'd like to start taking public comment. If you'd like to address the council, we need to clear the podium so that members of the public can speak, which I think is what you're here to do. So let's let the people speak. We need to clear the podium to do that. Okay, so we're trying, we're trying... Mr. Surchenko, please stop shouting. So we need to clear the podium. No, we've got a quorum so we can start the meeting.
We have a quorum, but there is an order of public comment, so you'll be called. Your name will be called and you can step to the podium and make public comment, but in order to do that, we need to call the meeting to order by taking a roll, by taking the roll. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to do that so that we can begin the public comment. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, present. Let's start the meeting.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hutt, Corretts, Cricorian, Lee, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Ramon Rodriguez. Ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read the rules for public comment. I can summarize them. So for members of the public, we're going to take public comment. You can speak on any of the agenda items are open for public comment, which are items 19 to 26 and 34. You have a minute for general public comment too if you wish. I have a feeling that most of you probably want to talk in general public comment. So you'll just let me know what you want to speak on and you'll get a minute per item if you want to talk on the items, up to three minutes, and a minute for general if you want to talk about the things that have been spoken about earlier in the meeting. Okay? So let's, we can call the first speaker.
And with that, we are ready. Let's call upon Candido. Candido, you called several items on the agenda and one item for general, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Candido.
So can we let Mr. Candido in? It's his turn to speak.
Candido, it's yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. You did call upon me. My name is Candido Maris and I've been here since 1989 and I've seen corruption here for all those years. And for many years, you folks know that I've been fighting Ms. Martinez and I condemn her for her words because she has laid a nuclear bomb here that we will not allow to divide us. We must come together as people of this great city and we must join hands and we must forgive also. Please, those of you in this community, you have to forgive. You know you have to forgive. We could be in the same situation with Martinez, but please, just try to forgive. But this has been happening since night for many, many years and I hold this council responsible and I thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you, Candido. Thank you. And now, if all speakers today, you can speak on general public comment and we'll hear every last one of you, so feel free to just focus in on what you're feeling today. Next, we have Herman on the queue.
Hello, hello, hello. How's everybody feeling today? Do we want justice? ¿Queremos justicia? Okay, esto viene. The comments of now former City Council President Nuri Martinez and council member Kevin De Leon and with the complicity of Gil Sadio and the former Federation President Ron Herrera who were in the room laughing at these comments are racist, disgusting, and undermine the solidarity work that we've all been building here in Los Angeles. These four individuals have possibly damaged the decades of intentional and difficult work of building multiracial understanding and solidarity among black and Latinx communities. Martinez and her colleagues prove that they care more about consolidating their own political power than being of service to our great city. The offensive, anti-black, anti-indigenous, anti-child, anti-queer, anti-tenant comments are revolting.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next, next we have Herman, followed by Red Chief, followed by Mike Greenspan. Thank you. We're going to get through every speaker today. Herman is next, followed by Red Chief and Mike Greenspan. Herman, you have the microphone.
Okay, Mr. Herman, it's your turn. You had your next card in.
So the mass returns to Los Angeles to speak on item 19, 20, 23, and 24, and finally 26. My grand entrance, I want to thank you all for having us here as el grito de Hispanic culture. Now, Mr. Fable, can we read into the record my items, please?
Mr. Herman, which items did you sign up for? You've already used 30 seconds up.
I'm regarding all items, three minutes and my non-general public comments, sir.
You've used one meeting. We'll set the clock for 30, three minutes for the other items. Please stick to the items, Mr. Herman.
I will try my fucking best.
But people that want to speak, so please...
Right, I will try my fucking best. Public hearings have not been heard. Item 19, Kevin De Leon's a piece of shit. Fuck item 19. Item number 20, relative to offer of a reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, conviction. Snitches get stitches. Shut your ass up and let me finish, fool. Let me finish. God damn it, I got three motherfucking minutes, motherfucker, want to get into the ruckus.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Stop the clock.
You're done.
So...
Herman, you're done.
Yeah, okay, so... So, Mr. Herman, you weren't on the items. You've used up your minute, so we're going to move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Red Chief. Our next speaker is Red Chief. We have to go in the order of people who came here to fill out speaker cards so we can hear from folks. Red Chief is next.
Thank you, I just want to say fuck you Mitch and I'll pass it to Isaac.
Red Chief, you have the microphone.
Mr. Hunt, it's your turn, so please...
Yes, thank you, I'm the Red Chief Hunt. Most of this shit is bullshit. Number one, Mike Bonin's been calling us monkeys for years. All of this don't make no sense. You know what? All of you guys need to take, take a look at yourself and figure it out because you guys are all fucked up, see? And you guys all cause trouble, man, and this is what, one big problem, man. A whole bunch of bullshit on national TV in LA. About what? Nothing. Because everybody has done some name-calling. Everybody has done name-calling in their life. I don't agree with it. Yeah, I don't agree with it, but the one that's pointing the finger has done the most name-calling. Put us off Venice Beach, all the black people. He put us all off Venice Beach for some real estate. Fuck you, Mike Bonin.
All right, our next speaker, we're going to, we're going to give Isaac Bryan, state Assembly Member, the privilege of speaking now. So Isaac Bryan, Assembly Member, will step to the microphone and then we're going to, we're going to go in the order of the names that people on the list. So ma'am, after we're, we're going to hear from Assembly Member... Ma'am, you will have a chance to speak. Everyone's going to. Assembly Member Bryan will now have the floor.
I see the clock ticking. Am I supposed to go?
Yes, please, we'll reset it for a minute. Please go ahead.
Thank you. The reason this is a hard meeting to conduct is because we heard an hour of some of the most hateful things this city has ever heard from three, four people in some of the most powerful positions in Los Angeles. People are hurting and I'm going to, I am a black adopted child, Mike, so I feel for your son. And in this moment, I'm so glad he gets to see you fighting and I'm here to fight with him and I'm also glad that you didn't make this story about you or him. Brown political power can't be rooted in black erasure, in anti-indigenous speech, in homophobic speech. We deserve better. The people have called for these resignations. Elected officials have called for these resignations. We need these resignations before we can move forward, but trust me, there will be a healing because everybody in this room and everybody in this city wants that healing. But we can't have it without accountability and I'm hopeful today we get that accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to hear next from Jasmine Garcia. Jasmine Garcia. Jasmine Garcia.
Jasmine here? Please come up. And while Jasmine's coming up, Ms. Garcia, I would just note, Mr. President, that there have been requests to continue items 1 through 10 until the 18th of October and items 14 through 16 to the 28th of October.
Good afternoon. My name's Jasmine Garcia and I'm outraged, right like everybody sitting here, but I'm going to take some time to pass on the mic to my compañera, another member of ACE, so that she can take my time and speak. But we call on the resignation of Kevin De Leon and Gil Sadio and Nuri Martinez, but we need that resignation now.
Okay, so we can't see time, but I assume Ms. Garcia signed up yourself, right? Right? So why don't, we need to go in the order in which the cards come in.
Okay. Jasmine, Jasmine, did she sign up as well? Is she on the list? Signed up? And su nombre, por favor. Su nombre.
Okay. Mi nombre es Goyapa Maldonado. Que Nuri Martinez renuncie, Kevin De Leon renuncie, Gil Sadio. Yo tengo un niño de color que es mi nieto. Estoy dolida y necesito que esa persona...
Un momento, traducción. Un momento, traducción, por favor.
My name is Goyapa Maldonado and I'm here because I'm asking for the resignation of Nuri Martinez, Kevin De Leon, and Gil Sadio. I have a colored grandchild and I'm here outraged and in a lot of pain.
Yo vengo de descendencia indígena y estamos siendo pisoteados por personas que nosotros elegimos. Que renuncian los cuatro porque los cuatro tienen responsabilidades. Necesitamos. Fueron elegidos por el pueblo y el pueblo está en disposición que se vayan. Necesitamos la renuncia urgente.
Okay, momento, un momento.
I come from an indigenous background and we're tired of getting stepped on. These are the people that we chose and we're asking for the resignation of all four of them because they need to go.
No tiene que haber ninguna discriminación para la gente de color. Todos somos iguales. Necesitamos respeto, educación porque nosotros ustedes los salarios se les paga con los impuestos del pueblo.
Gracias.
The people chose you guys and we need respect, we need education, and we need to know, need you guys to know that we're the ones that pay for your salaries and we need respect.
Thank you. Gracias. Mr. Streffan?
Yes, so, so two things, Mr. President. Am I correct that items 1 through 10 and 14 through 16 were continued without objection?
Without objection.
Okay. And so let's take the next card for the speaker. We have to go in order. We can't have just people ceding time to each other.
So the next speaker is Jelani Hendricks. Jelani Hendricks. You're the next speaker.
Is Ms. Hendricks there? Okay, so let's let Jelani, Jelani's supposed to speak. It's her turn.
We have everyone who's signed up and we have the order, so everyone who's signed up will have a chance to speak. Thank you if you're patient. Jelani Hendricks.
My name is Shadell Hawari and I'm representing the black Los Angeles young Democrats today. As you can see on our shirts, it says that we are with the blacks. Nuri Martinez denigrated George Gascón by saying that he's with the blacks and that is not okay. We know that it is important to stand in solidarity. If George Gascón, the district attorney of this city, wants to be in solidarity with black people, we are not going to talk about him in a negative manner. If anyone in this room wants to stand in solidarity with black people, we are not going to say fuck them, they're with the blacks. We care about solidarity. We care about our Oaxacan brothers and sisters and what they said about them is not okay. And what is happening, we are not only going to be asking for resignations, we are not only going to be asking for investigations. We need to ensure that the gerrymandering that was happening behind closed doors is looked at with an investigation so that we, as black people, as people of color, as Latinx folks, can ensure that we...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did Jelani Hendricks, is Jelani Hendricks in the House? All right, the next speaker will be Jo Helen Schumate. Jo Helen Schumate.
Is Ms. Schumate here? Hi. Hi. Great, come to the mic. All right, please begin.
Good morning. I'm really disappointed, more so in race, race, Gil Cedillo. I remember when he was an eligibility worker with Los Angeles County DPS where I worked, and we all loved him, and he. I remember when he went over to 660 and got busy with that union, that's how he got his political comeuppance, working with 660. So I hate he left. I wish he would have been here to hear my comment, because I'm disappointed, and he needs to resign, and also, Nuri Martinez needs to resign immediately. But before she resigns, she need to give Mark Ridley Thomas back his benefits, because she has resigned, and she is getting, she has not resigned, she's on a leave of absence, receiving her benefits. But she should have to give him his benefits.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Next, we have Juan Carlos. Our next speaker is Juan Carlos.
Is Mr. Juan Carlos here?
Juan Carlos.
Great, okay, so.
Good morning, everyone. Yeah, I'm Reverend Juan Carlos Rudy, I belong to United Methodist Church.
Sorry, can you move the mic a little closer up to your house, so we can hear you?
Yes, yes. I'm Reverend Juan Carlos Rudy, and I'm Cuban, I'm Afro-Cuban, because I'm black, but today, I just want to say two words. Los Angeles is very sad, and the people that we charge, they be failed, so we can accept this. The only thing those people have to do, they say, I'm sorry, and I got to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Cardenas. Lori Cardenas, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lori Cardenas. I am president of National Action Network Los Angeles. Brother Bonin, I too am a adopted child. I stand with you in that. Our children, your child, nobody's child in this chamber is a monkey. Nobody. That language, unacceptable. The anti-blackness, unacceptable. The anti-immigrant language, unacceptable. We are here today to say, resign today. Not tomorrow, not when their term is over, but on today. That was unacceptable, what we heard. Unacceptable. Council, put pressure on your colleagues to resign today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maraki? Maraki? Or Maraki?
Okay, come on up.
Coming up, come on up.
First of all, fuck you. Fuck De Leon. Fuck Nuri, and fuck Cedillo. Fuck this whole meeting right here, because it's illegitimate. The people are shutting this shit down afterwards. This whole thing is racist. The fact that they had the audacity to sit here in front of the people that they mocked, that they minimized, that they demonized, that they marginalized, is unacceptable. The fact that you are trying to continue with business as usual is unacceptable. 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 We are the people, and we are the voices who matter in this room right now, not yours. I yield the rest of my time, but fuck this.
Next, we have Pastor Thimbelika Coleman Smart. Pastor Thimbelika Coleman Smart, who would be followed by Damian Goodman, and then after that, Pastor Q. Jane Marie.
Peace and blessings, everyone. Scientific research has told us that the oldest bones found were that of a black woman. This information is for Nuri, Ron, Gil, and Kevin, and anybody else talking in that Jim Crow antibellum south back room. You will not shame blackness. You will not shame our royal children. We, like in the woman king, will come for you. We are coming for you today. Are we coming for?
Yeah.
Okay, are we coming for?
Yeah.
We could not have them sitting amidst this family meeting, because they have soiled their seats. Their seats are poisonous. The seat of Nuri is poisonous, and I would like, in the spirit of karma, that her check be grabbed, just like you grabbed MRT's check.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Damian Goodman, who will be followed by Pastor Q. Jean Marie, followed by the letter A.
I had two minutes. I had two minutes. I was going to speak on an agenda item that is on, ready for public comment as well. Thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Damian Goodman.
Continue.
You're good, please start.
Sorry, we're having a little clock issue. Please begin.
There are two items, Mr.
Oh, which item, I'm sorry, which items?
Destination Crenshaw.
Okay, please, so start with that one, and then go to general, and we'll restart your clock, please.
Only one item. Clock.
Okay, now begin.
Thank you. My name is Damian Goodman, I'm a CD-10 resident, a Crenshaw subway coalition, downtown Crenshaw rising, and a member of the blacks. Destination Crenshaw is a project that intends to honor the contributions of black people to the city of Los Angeles, a city that seats on unceded Tonga land. My great-great-grandfather and great-great-granduncle came to Los Angeles fleeing from the segregated South in 1904. Here, they established the first black bank west of the Mississippi, they built the first FHA housing for black people in the country. Like many black Angelenos who will hopefully be recognized through Destination Crenshaw, their contributions are remarkable as individuals, as businessmen, as civic leaders, because they overcame a tremendous amount of racism then carried in the Jim Crow South. Over 118 years later, much has changed, but so much remains the same. The repugnant, racist, anti-black, anti-gay comments made by the city's leaders and condoned are not merely a reflection of their individual bigotry, they are a reflection of a city government that is rotten and anti-black at its core.
Thank you, Damian, thank you. One more minute, yes.
Yeah, please continue.
Mike, my thoughts are with you, your family, that beautiful black child. That attack was an attack on that black child and all black children. The tapes have simply brought to the surface an anti-black racism that permeates within this city government. It is reflected in your policies, it is reflected in your budget, it is reflected in your hiring. It is no wonder why we are home to the largest unhoused population in America, which is disproportionately black and over-criminalized. It is no wonder why we have a black displacement crisis and attempt at black erasure. This entire city government is in need of an exorcism. It begins with the immediate resignation of Cedillo, De Leon, and Martinez. Resign now or be recalled. But it is just the start. There is a need for some truth and reconciliation, there is some need for some reparatory.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman, thank you. Next, we have Pastor Q. Jean Marie, followed by Akili, followed by Pastor Eddie Anderson.
Okay. Pastor Q. Jean Marie, the Church Without War, Skid Row, also include clergy and lady, United for Economic Justice. I'm standing with my brother Walter Contreras. One of my brown colleagues yesterday said that Latinos cannot become the new face of racism. That's heavy. Neither can black folks, because you know, we know, once we get into the system, oftentimes we adapt to the system. I'd like to say, though, there's only one order of business for us today. That is, everyone will speak, I understand you guys already introduced the motion to get them to resign, they need to resign today. We're not, we're not letting any other business take place today, except for the people to share what's on their heart, and then there's no more meeting. That's it. They need to resign.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Akili, followed by Pastor Eddie Anderson, who will be followed by Pastor Kelvin Salz.
My name is Akili, and I'm here on behalf of Black Lives Matters and the Fannie Lou Hamer Institute. And last night, well into the evening, sixty black leaders met, one to express our outrage, two to express the immediate demand for the resignation of Kevin De Leon, Gil, Nuri Martinez, and Cedillo, immediately. No questions asked, just go. Your political careers are over, you need to leave, and there's nothing you can do. That was the first point that we made. The second point was, we are calling for a complete and comprehensive investigation into the redistricting process, and calling for a complete overhaul into the House of Labor that allows, that allows for, that allows for anti-racist and anti-black discussions to be supported and held in the House of Labor. And so, those sixty black leaders, while they are, some of them are here today, but the first thing that we call for is the immediate, the immediate resignation, without question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Akili. We have Pastor Eddie Anderson, followed by Pastor Kevin Salz, who will be followed by Maria Alvaranga.
Good morning, my name is Reverend Eddie Anderson, I serve the McCarty Moore Christian Church. More importantly.
Pastor Anderson, one moment, please, Pastor Anderson, let's save your time so you can be heard.
So let's let, there's somebody at the podium who's, it's his turn to speak, so I want to hear from him, so can we set the clock back in a minute so you can speak? Please, I'm sorry, please begin.
My name is Reverend Eddie Anderson, I'm senior pastor at McCarty Moore Christian Church, we've been a part of the blacks for ninety years in this community, I'm also the redistricting commissioner for CD-10, and I have some questions, because while on that commission, we were called all kind of N-words and all kind of things, but I did not expect that from city council, I did not expect that from the city council president, Gil Cedillo, or Kevin De Leon. There was mystery maps that appeared in the last parts of our redistricting commission, and we wondered, where did these maps come from? After hearing those tapes, I think I know where those maps come from. I'm requesting that the city attorney do an investigation on where did those maps come from? How they tried to gerrymander especially the district I represented, CD-10, all throughout the process. We need accountability, they need to resign, and for a message from the blacks. Cornel West says, you can't serve the people unless you love the people. You can't love the people unless you know the people. They don't know us, they can't serve us, and they definitely don't love us, so they must resign today.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Next, we have Pastor Kevin Salz, followed by Maria Alvaranga, who will be followed by Dominga Solorsano.
Good morning, I'm Pastor Kelvin Salz, and I am a faith-ruthful community organizer, also here with Clergy for Black Lives, and I'm joined by my brother here, Pastor Guillermo Torres. Certainly a dark cloud sits over Los Angeles once again, and it sits over Los Angeles because of the blatant, bold, destructive, and demeaning comments by city council members and a labor leader. So we are here to say we are hurt, we are in pain, we are disappointed by the divisive and destructive words uttered by a system that seems to be infected with and affected by progressive plantation politics. So what we are asking for is resignation first. Apologies fine, though disjurious and pretentious, but we want to move from apology to accountability, resignation. Secondly, investigation, because we know it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Next, we have Maria Alvaranga, followed by Dominga Solorsano, who will be followed by Irma Mendez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Maria Alvaranga, I'm coming from District Ocho. I'm coming because I feel frustrated and unrespected for our council. They are coming to represent us in what happened when they are falling down. That community is going to suffer a lot. My indigenous, they are coming to work in the fields, they are bringing the food to our tables, and nobody said nothing about this. African-Americans is very important, our children, I'm the teacher, I love my children's. My, my, mis niños, those are wonderful, trees are on my hands. My people in the houses, they are living with the stress to be in the streets, more people on the street with their kids, with their animals, is not possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dominga Solorsano, who will be followed by Irma Mendez, who will be followed by Maria Briones.
Necesito traducción, por favor. Buenos dias. Yo soy, me llamo Dominga Solorsano, y soy del distrito nueve, y soy miembro de ACE. Estoy muy preocupada por estas personas que tienen estudio, verdad? Y yo también, yo no tengo estudio, pero les tengo respeto tanto como mayores, menores, y estudiados y no estudiados.
One moment. One moment.
My name is Dominga Solorsano, and I'm here with District Nine, and I'm here with ACE, and I'm here because I'm worried about the people that have high education. I don't have education, but I still have respect.
Y por ese mismo respeto les pido, por favor, que extiendan las ayudas de inquilinos y no ensuciándonos, porque también somos seres humanos, igual que Kevin De Leon y Nuri Martinez y Cedillo, por favor.
And I'm here to please ask you to not remove the emergency protections for tenants, and we are just also human beings, just like Kevin De Leon, Nuri Martinez, and Gil Cedillo.
Y ellos tienen que arrepentirse porque ellos vienen de una mujer, y no sé si de México, de Guatemala, no sé de dónde son, pero también valemos lo mismo que ellos, porque por eso pagamos impuestos, aunque tan humildes que seamos.
And they're going to have to repent, because they come from a women. I'm not sure if they're from Mexico or Guatemala or wherever they're from, but we have to give them respect, because we also pay our taxes here.
Thank you. And this must be Irma Mendez, who will be followed by Maria Briones, who will be followed by Victoria Enriquez.
My name is Irma Mendez. I am with ACE Nine, and I'm here speaking about the COVID protection last year, that it never did work, what they said they will do, they didn't do it. They just said a word, and they don't stand up on their word. We need people who will do the right thing to stand up and do what they say. You know, there are two prejudices. We are all black people together, but we are a human being, so we want, we asking that they will do the right thing and let these three candidates get off of there. We don't need them anymore. We don't need them, because we got to get the one that will do the right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Maria Briones. Maria will be followed by Victoria Enriquez, followed by, one word already. And yes, one moment, one moment, Ms. Briones, yes, Mr. Streffan.
As the next speaker comes up, there's been a request to continue item twenty-one to next Tuesday, October eighteenth. Is that the order, Mr. President, without objection?
That shall be the order without objection. And Ms. Briones, please, you have the floor.
Good morning, my name is Maria Briones. I'm a member of ACE on the eighth district, and I'm a pale. I'm very embarrassed to see my representatives to act the way they did. I'm a Hispanic like them, and I'm really hurt. And I want you to think, and actually to revoke the votes for last week, for the protection of our tenants. I am a tenant, and they decided not to vote for us. So we need those protections, we still need the protections, and we want them to resign now, not tomorrow, not next week, not next year, now. We want them to leave their seats now. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Enriquez, Victoria Enriquez, followed by the name already, and followed by Alonso Landeros.
Victoria Enriquez, yo soy miembro de ACE, y vivo en el distrito nueve. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Victoria Enriquez, vivo en, soy miembro de ACE, y vivo en el distrito nueve.
Y traducción, por favor.
Good morning, my name is Victoria Enriquez, I live in district number eight, and I'm a member of ACE.
Yo siento muy feo, porque todos somos humanos, y la gente está muy ofendida por el señor Cedillo, por Kevin De Leon, y Nuri Martinez. Yo no sé, se rebajaron mucho al hablar eso, pensaron que nunca iban a darse cuenta de lo que, de los mismos compañeros de ustedes de la mesa directiva que se ponen a hablar los compañeros. a hablar los compañeros. Y, este, también, les digo que les quiten sus salarios porque gracias a Dios tienen su trabajo aquí, por toda la comunidad.
Uh, I'm feeling really, uh, this is bad because we're all human beings, and I feel offended by Kevin De Leon, Nuri Martinez, and Gil Cedillo. I feel like they're talking between them as coworkers, and they thought that nobody was going to hear them, but I'm here to ask that you guys remove their salaries.
Que les sirvió su estudio que tuvieron para rebajarse a eso que hablaron? Eso no quedaba para ellos. Gracias.
Thank you.
What good was their education for them to sink that low and to keep talking like that?
Next, we have already, followed by Alonso Landeros, followed by Eloisa Lopez.
Si, los latinos y la traducción, por favor.
Si.
La, los latinos y las, los, la gente de color, que, que estemos unidos en estos momentos, y esto que está pasando no, no es permitido, que es algo que injusticia, que todos tenemos que estar fuertes en estos momentos, y estas personas tienen que ya firmar ahorita para estar afuera.
Okay, un momento, por favor.
I want to say that the Latinos and the people of color were here together in this moment, and this should not be permitted, and we have to stay strong in these moments, and these people have to sign their way out of here.
También, lo que está pasando en, en los hogares, que los dueños tratan de tomar ventaja, y sobre todo, ha sacado a los inquilinos para afuera, que todos pagamos renta, y vivimos en un techo que es una bendición. Muchas gracias, feliz día.
Thank you.
And then, also, that the landlords are trying to remove us from our house. We also pay rent, and we have a roof over our heads, and we're really grateful for that, and everybody have a nice day, and blessings to all.
Thank you. Uh, sir, could you please give me your name?
Morris Griffin, better known as Big Money Griff.
Okay, so, but, I have, I have Alonso Landeros, followed by Eloisa Lopez, though.
So, we'll, we'll get to you, but we're taking the order in which they should-
We will absolutely get to you, sir. We will get to you. We're just taking these in order. Alonso Landeros, followed by Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas.
Muy buenas tardes a todas las personas aquí que están presentes. Les pido que paren bien la oreja por lo, con lo que les voy a decir.
Good afternoon to everybody here present today. I would like you guys all to lift up your ears to what I'm going to say right now.
Hoy vengo representando a la comunidad indígena oaxaqueña mexicana. Qué lástima que no está Nuri Martinez ahí, para que me diga carcajeándome mi cara, que somos mexicanos feos.
I'm here on behalf of the Oaxacan Indigenous Community here in Los Angeles, and I would like to have Nuri Martinez tell me to my face with that cackling of hers that we are the ugly Mexicans.
Quiero que se, que se vayan del poder. El poder que ellos tienen para estar discriminando a la comunidad mexicana y Afroamericana.
I need them to leave because they're the ones that have the power to discriminate against African and Mexican communities.
Yo he sido parte de ACE, reclamando nuestras escuelas de Los Ángeles, y soy padre contra la privatización. He visto de cara a cara a los ricos que están metiéndose, pagando campañas políticas de muchos de ustedes.
I'm part of ACE, and I'm part of the Parents of Schools Anti-Privatization, and I want, I've seen parents face to face paying for campaigns for you guys to get reelected.
Como políticos piden nuestro voto, ahorita Nuri Martinez está apoyando a María Brenes, pagado por Bill Brownfish, y Red Hasting. Es una vergüenza que-
Gracias. Gracias.
Right now, Nuri Martinez is, uh, getting her campaign money from Maria Briones.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, we hear you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas. Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas.
She had a translator, so half of, half of her time went to the translation.
Do we have Eloisa Lopez here, please?
Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas.
Just so that you guys know.
Followed by Suyapa Maldonado.
So, it's Eloisa Lopez's-
Are any of those three names here, Eloisa Lopez, Elba Cuevas, or Suyapa Maldonado in the house?
Hi, if it's your turn, sir.
Suyapa?
Hi, my name is Elba Cuevas, but I'm gonna listen to everybody else.
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Elba Cuevas Varelas.
Well, I have Eloisa Lopez, Elba Cuevas, Suyapa Maldonado, or Michelle Hope Walker, Michelle- Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute, don't start my time.
Michelle Hope Walker.
All right, it's your turn now.
It's yours.
Okay. First of all, Mitch, I do want to say thank you for taking it up. Bless your heart. Um, the next thing I want to say, it's hard enough out here being black. And so, for our own government to be against us, our government is where we go to file complaints when somebody is being racist against us. And then, the other thing, Mark, y'all got Mark out of here quick. I don't know how y'all got an indictment, but y'all need to find some indictments against these other four, okay? The three that's only, it doesn't make any sense. This is wrong, what is going on. Homelessness, black. Not only that, y'all need to look back for this past year, all the corruption, everything they put their hands to need to be investigated. Because if they've lied, and they've been doing, look how they covered all this stuff, we would have never known without, thank you, Licker, thank you, Licker. We would have never known. We need investigations for the whole year. Matter of fact, for their whole terms. They need to be in jail. Yes, they need to resign. And please, y'all, y'all gotta, y'all gotta get them off. Put them in a room somewhere. You say you can't take them off? Put them in a room somewhere. We don't want to see them up here. Do something different. You got Mark off, so I know y'all can find-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Big Money Griff, followed by Ellen Evans, followed by Vernine Mincy. Big Money Griff, or Ellen Evans?
So, it's Big Money Griff's, it's your turn.
Here we are.
All eyes are on Los Angeles, California, right now. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I'm asking that those of you around this horseshoe horn here to think about changing the Los Angeles City Charter to get rid of these three. Today. Cedillo, I know you're watching. De Leon, I know you're watching. Shame on you. Shame on you guys for doing, for being complicit. I got a problem with that. I've been involved in this in our community since the Rodney King beating, Daryl Gates, O.J. Simpson, police brutality. I've been down here many years. I'm 72 years old, and I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. This is disgraceful. And so, I'm asking you to force them to resign. That's all of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Evans, followed by Vernine Mincy. Ellen Evans, followed by Vernine Mincy.
Hi, my name is Ellen Evans, and I'm here on behalf of my Neighborhood Association and Council District 4. Um, and I'm also a lesbian mom. And I just want to say that we too are saddened and angered by the, and denounce the divisive remarks we learned of, of on Sunday. These sentiments have no place in public discourse and no place in our hearts. Um, and this is especially galling in the face of the multitude of challenges our city faces. Um, I was going to list them all, but I'm sure you know what they are. Um, so, thanks very much, and let's hold everybody accountable.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Vernine Mincy, followed by Dr. Critical R. Truth Bay. Vernine Mincy.
I'm Vernine Mincy, and I'm appalled by the behavior of the City Council in general. I'm appalled behind those words that were said. We've been in the streets, and in being in the streets, we don't need to be mocked being in the streets of the words that this city should be listening to and uplifting. There's people that are homeless on our streets, that are houseless, that there is no regard. And it's shameful, the fact that we have elected officials that think that it is their right to sit and mock black folks, to mock indigenous folks, to mock people in this city that you have torn apart with your words. I want the immediate resignation of each one of them. Then, I want an investigation, and everything that has been done in the 10th District, I want it to be reviewed. Because anything that people, and black people in that part of the city have tried to do, this City Council has stood in the way for it not to take place. So, I want an investigation, and I want it immediate. But I want their resignation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Critical R. Truth Bay will be followed by Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner.
Agenda 18 and public comment. Agenda 18 and public comment.
Okay, so, you have-
One minute for each.
Okay, so, the LAPD hiring process, I know we're talking about something that we already know that happens behind the scenes. My issue is how we treat each other out here. Half of us don't even show up here every week. I am appalled, not by what we already know behind the scenes, because Matthew Ten Chavas from Kevin De Leon's office never met with black organizations, homeless organizations, because we are mayatas. Hmm? That's what we heard, yeah? So, it's not just about Bannon's black son. It's about black equity for black women born and raised. California's reparations committee, we still discussing it. So, what Nuri Martinez did was not surprising. It's what everybody does behind closed doors. She just got caught. So, please don't sit here, don't tell us nothing, just cut the check. Cut the check. So, account number 3251379514012100.
And you can go on to General, Dr. Truth Bay.
Account number, uh, routing number 12100358, the Kingdom Warriors Foundation. We just want the $150 million that LASSA and their white supremacists and their Nuri Martinez mentality to return back that money to black organizations. I need to see some black businesses apply for this funding. Don't sit there and complain when they're not putting the paperwork in. Put your paperwork in, because now you're going to get funded. You're going to get funded. We don't want to hear apologies, sorrys, or I feel so bad. I don't want to see you crying. We don't care. Cut the check. You see how Rihanna says it best? Better have my money? That's what we're saying. When we born and raised here, and my ancestors, I'm an FBA. I'm a descendant of slaves, so we have a distinct history. I don't want you saying nothing to us. Just cut the check. Cut the check. Because we can help build housing, we're trying to build housing. We're not trying to hear you discuss how to solve homelessness, because you don't have a clue about that. We already know how you feel. We want to do our own job now, just cut the check, and then you can resign and talk about shit later.
Thank you. Next, we have Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner, followed by Veronica Sans, or Sansay. Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner, followed by Veronica Sansay. Or any of these three individuals in the chambers? Okay.
My name is Veronica Sansay. I am part of Downtown Crenshaw Rising. I am also One Queen's Army. But most importantly, I am black. Okay? Most importantly, I am a resident of District 10. Now, Nuri Martinez, and this is not a request, this is a demand. Nuri Martinez, Gil Cedillo, and Kevin De Leon, they need to go. They need to go now. I'm ready to escort them out of this city, uh, hall, out of this City Council chambers. They mean us no good. They need to, we, I am demanding that everything in District 10 be investigated, because you people act like District, the residents of District 10 don't matter. But I'm here to tell you that we all matter. All black people matter in Los Angeles, California. And how dare the City Council just allow, uh, Nuri? Nuri has, has been trying to displace, uh, District 10?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I, thank you. Next, we have Janay Moore. Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner, followed by Ramel. Janay Moore, if you're in the house, or Andrew Grabner? Or Tor, or Ramel? All right? Yeah, if I called your name, please step forward. You're, you're on. And, and please give us your name.
I'm Andrew Grabner.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
All right, so, I'm here today to say that an apology or anything else is not enough. We need the immediate resignation of Nuri Martinez, Gil Cedillo, and Kevin De Leon. Um, and their comments are racist, they're unacceptable. And they've also likely messed up the entire redistricting process. And I'm also here to say that, um, I'm guessing, based on the culture I see in this council and such, that it's not just the three of them. There's probably several other of you on this council. That have, uh, that are also saying racist comments, and I call on any of you have to resign now before, and if we don't, if you don't, just say, admit it, resign, and if you don't do that, we will find out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Ramel. Ramel, followed by Tori Bailey. Ramel, Tori Bailey, followed by Denise Francis Woods. Ramel, then Tori, then Denise.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say again, that's, it's very disappointing, just coming out of college. And I've told Nuri this for weeks now, that I hope that she continues to listen to us, but, uh, obviously, she does not. And I just want to say that Nuri doesn't represent the Latino Hispanic community, and she never will, because I thought, coming into here, that she, coming from the same background as I do, single parent, you know, coming from not very much money, that she would cause change, but she's, she's a failure. That's what she is. She's a failure, just like her father, who just left her there. That's how I felt. I don't want to make this personal, but it, it just hurts that she's not helping her community, and she shares the same racist, like racism that we've all shared. We all have our little interactions, and I'm 24 years old. I've seen my mother be belittled as, because of her race, and it's tough. And I wanted to change for this.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have Tori Bailey, followed by Denise Francis Woods, followed by Bex Kleinfeldter.
Okay. First, there was a violation of the Brown Act. We want that addressed. I'm, I had to write this down, because it's been emotional. A racist mind is toxic and will soon cause you to rot internally. A tear came to my eye as my spirit could not believe that Gil Cedillo was a part of this hatred. And how dare he say the words of, and tease the Koreans of dark skin when he is as dark as many of us? This is, I mean, why? Why? This is why many of our other cultures and races of people do not have many of the jobs today. I was just at Gil's office in May and June, and a few of his staff need to go as well because they're following the leadership. I'm running out of time, but I have a lot to say about this. And the trash that came from Nuri's mouth was such mal-intent, so we are calling for all involved, Nuri Gil, Kevin Ron, officially to resign without pay as of today.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Uh, Denise Francis Woods, followed by Bex Kleinfeldter, followed by Enrique Velazquez.
Good morning. Um, I think I'm in agreeance with everybody else about the, um, resignations of all three of these council members, but I really want to speak on Item Number 21, which I realize that it's not being voted on, but if I can just do it in a comment, and then I'll be done with it. Um, Crenshaw Destination Crenshaw, it's an item that's asking for a small amount of money or what have you. But what I want to say to that is simply this. There's been a lot of money spent in Crenshaw, Destination Crenshaw. Okay? One thing the 8th District needs more than an art museum, is we need our homelessness handled. We need jobs. We need grocery stores. We need banks. These are the things that our- These are the things that our councilman, who's been there for eight years now, has done absolutely nothing about it. We don't even have a damn library in District 8. Okay? So he can get his cootles today about asking for Nuri to resign. We all are in agreeance for that to happen, but there's more work to be done in District 8 that Marquise Harris Dawson has not taken care of. And so this is what I'm here for today, just to say that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. We have Bex Kleinfeldter, followed by Enrique Velazquez, followed by Tenacity.
Council members Martinez, Cedillo, and DeLeon must resign immediately. The recordings were not comments that show frustration got the better of you, but display the character you are comfortable with when the cameras aren't rolling. Approximately 9% of LA is black, and each one are now less comfortable and less safe knowing that city council is not only full of bigots and racists, but also threats to democracy. I said what I said. You politicians and elected leaders of Los Angeles represent a great, if not a greater threat to democracy than any Trump supporter with a flagpole. You are the true insurrectionists. Because not only did you spew vile hateful comments, but those comments clearly informed the way you exercise political power this city gave you by electing you to city council. Shame on you for subverting democracy this way. These comments were made over a year ago, and your apologies now prove that you aren't ashamed of your conduct or your behavior. You're ashamed you got caught. LA must be better than this and prove itself the example for the rest of the country to follow. Resign now.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Enrique Velazquez, followed by Tenacity, followed by Mike Greenspan.
I'm Enrique Velazquez, and I am with the LA Tenancy Union. And I am upset, I am angry because of what we found out, how these people have referred to black folks, Latino community, indigenous people, and everybody else that they mentioned in those conversations. They were caught, but this is an indication that that's who they are. This is an indication that conversations like this happen behind the door all the fucking time. We are sick, we're tired. You guys have created policies to gentrify our communities, to pull apart our communities. That is not acceptable. That needs to stop. This is a historic moment. Please do not take it lightly. We're watching. Elections are coming, and all of you guys are vulnerable. This is not in LA. It shouldn't happen in LA. You guys should be creating and thinking about the needs of low-income families, not being the pockets of developers. This has to stop, and it has to stop but once. Nuri Martinez, Cedillo, and DeLeon need to resign now. Not tomorrow, not next day, but today.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Tenacity, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Elizabeth Hernandez.
I just want to echo everything that Baba Akili said, my Baba. Y'all need to get investigated. All y'all are compromised, each and every sort of way. Even if you are hurt and have been slandered, your family's been slandered, everybody is compromised here. Ain't no exception to it. So here's what's gonna happen. Everybody else is gonna speak, the public is gonna have their comment, but anything less than, hey, Nuri, Kevin, and Gil just handed in their resignations, please and thank you, is, is just not acceptable. You are past the point of getting the benefit of the doubt. Time and time again, we have been trusting you, and you've been breaking our trust, and we cannot keep having this happen. Oh, you want to, I don't need the mic. I don't need the mic. Look, this shit has to stop. Mitch, I just talked to Shannon. Why does she have more humanity than you? You just talk to us like, oh, we gonna do this or that without you. Don't they ask a part, bro?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Greenspan, followed by Elizabeth Hernandez, followed by Sofia Mendoza. Mike Greenspan, Elizabeth Hernandez, or Sofia Mendoza? Mr. Greenspan, are you here? No? Okay. Are you, uh...
Elizabeth Hernandez.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Uh, my name is Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm an ACE organizer. Uh, as a mother, I feel the pain that Mike Bonin was feeling. My child has been also been subjected to, um, uh, racism, as a Latino. It's really heartbreaking when it comes from people that we, uh, just tenants, regular people in, 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 in our homes, you know? Things that are educated. And it's not like that. They made fun of us like if we were, you know, nothing. So one of the questions that one of my comrades just asked, so what color is, uh, Nuri Martinez's blood? Because she thinks she is up high. She's asking what village or people it's coming from. Or Oaxaca people, maybe sure, yes, but they're very mighty. Because our Mexican people are always fighting, as well as our black comrades, our Korean people. We all fight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Sofia Mendoza, followed by Rosa Martinez, followed by Ellen Ariaga.
Hola, mi nombre es Sofia Mendoza, y necesito traducción.
Okay.
Soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el distrito nueve. Si, estoy aquí, verdad, pidiendo la renuncia de Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, Gil Cedillo. Sí. Porque ellos es indignante lo que han dicho, verdad? Y también queremos que no se olviden ustedes que están aquí, que, ah, las protecciones de los inquilinos que le extienden, por favor, porque, ah, en...
Okay. Un momento.
Hello, my name is Sofia Mendoza, and I'm here with ACE from District 9. And I'm here to ask for the resignation of Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, and Gil Cedillo, because what they said, right? And I'm also here to remind you guys to please not remove the protections for tenants.
Continue.
Si, ya que dieron la extracción hasta el 31 de enero, pero eso no es suficiente. Sí, porque hay muchos inquilinos en la calle y no queremos ser uno más de ellos. Gracias.
Gracias.
Because even though you have extended the protection until January 31st, that is not enough. There are a lot of families on the street, and we don't want to be one more.
Thank you. Uh, we have Rosa Martinez, followed by Ellen Ariaga, followed by the Reverend Walter Contreras. Any of these three individuals in the chamber? Rosa Martinez, Ellen Ariaga, Reverend Walter Contreras, or Rodolfo Martinez?
Rodolfo.
Okay. Is this the Reverend Walter Contreras? The floor is yours, Reverend.
Yo soy un gringo caitudo. O sea que no soy gringo gringo. Primero fui indígena. Y ahora soy gringo caitudo. Porque los indios usamos caites, verdad? Ahora, yo participé en el primer ciclo de votación y voté por el señor Kevin DeLeon.
Momento.
Good morning. My name is gringo caitero. I'm not a gringo, but I'm a caitero. I used to be an indigenous, because indigenous people go around with their caito.
Pero qué decepción la que me ha llevado con el señor DeLeon. Yo creo que ellos violaron la ley. Ellos violaron la ley, porque están discriminando, verdad? Son racistas, y ya no deberían de regresar al consejo municipal. Porque este es un consejo honorable, pues.
Gracias.
I voted for the first time for Kevin DeLeon, and it's been a disappointment. And I'm here to ask for his resignation, because this is an honorable council meeting, and it should remain that way.
Thank you, Reverend. Uh, I called for Rodolfo Martinez, who will be followed by Leilani Hendricks. Rodolfo, uh, oh, he, he already, oh, that was, that was Mr. Martinez. Okay. Do we have Leilani Hendricks? Leilani Hendricks?
Ariaga.
Um, I have Annabella Marcos Sanchez, Leilani Hendricks. Any of those three individuals present? Please step forward. And you have the floor.
My name is Leilani Hendricks, president of Black Los Angeles Young Democrats. I'm gonna keep this short and sweet. When my wife read what Nuri Martinez said about Mike Bonin's son, she looked me in my face and said, is this the right city to raise our black son? Because I have a three-year-old, and I don't tolerate violence towards black children or any child at that. You know what I told her? I looked her in her face and said, we're not going anywhere. I love this city. I've adopted this city. Right? I told her, I'm gonna do my part to make this city better. And one last thing I want to say is, the blatant anti-black racism that was in those recordings is crazy. We witnessed four Latino leaders, some of the strongest leaders in this city, strategically planned and plotted to erase black political power. And we're the most marginalized community in this city. So I'm gonna tell you all this. I challenge all of you in this city council. Y'all need to address anti-black racism. And if you don't, we will.
Thank you.
And you have two choices. Be on the right side of history or be on the wrong side of history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annabella, followed by Marcos Sanchez, followed by Eduardo Masarriegos. Annabella, Marcos Sanchez, Eduardo Masarriegos.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ellen Ariaga. Soy miembro de ACE. Estoy aquí porque soy parte de la comunidad de Los Ángeles. Necesito traductor.
Okay. Traducción, por favor.
Hello, my name is Ellen Ariaga. I'm part of ACE, and I'm here as part of the community here in Los Angeles.
Estoy aquí porque realmente como todo ser humano necesita respeto, merece respeto. Tenemos que tener mucho cuidado al abrir nuestra boca cuando hablamos de otras personas. Y creo que ese es parte del respeto que merecemos como seres humanos. Por muy pequeño o grande que sea la persona, necesitamos ser respetuosos con, eh, con cualquier persona. Por esa razón estamos aquí para ser voz de nuestro pueblo. Y que ustedes que son las personas que guían nuestra ciudad y son las autoridades deberían de tener primero esa parte, el respeto hacia las demás personas.
We're here because we're all human beings here, and we all deserve respect. And we're here because everybody deserves to have the respect. And as a voice of the people here, and you guys should have respect for us as authority of this grand city.
Negroes, blancos, y gringos somos iguales. Eso es lo que tenemos que ver ante los ojos de Dios. Y tenemos que tenemos que respetarnos unos a los otros.
Gracias.
Gringos, white people, and black people, we're all children of God, and we all have to respect each other.
Thank you. Your name, sir?
Reverend Walter Contreras.
Oh, okay, we called you earlier, so please, the floor is yours.
Yes, you heard it all. Uh, I am here just to give a word to all of you leaders. Consider the fact that this is a moment that you can cease and do the right thing. And I am requesting that you lead well, and that God will give you grace and wisdom. If you do the right thing, the future is ahead. If you decide just to, you know, things as usually and don't worry about this stuff that is being cried out of the public, then you'll pay a very, very strong price. Make sure, make sure you hear the voices, you do the right thing, and remember, apology, confession, and forgiveness does not go by itself. Amen and amen. To amend, thank you, is very important. So I feel for my friends, because I also worked with them, but I am very disappointed. They need to resign. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Uh, we have Charles Zhu, Nancy Villanueva, and Henaro Leal. Perhaps I called your name, though. Ma'am, tu nombre, por favor.
Annabella. Mi nombre es Annabella. Soy miembro de ACE. Necesito intérprete, por favor. Yo estoy aquí como madre, y estoy bien decepcionada como mujer, especialmente por Nuri Martinez. Como mujeres, necesitamos como madres, somos las cabezas de los, de los hogares, y necesitamos educar a nuestros hijos de hoy en adelante. No va racismo, por favor, líderes, líderes representantes de nuestras comunidades Latinas, por favor, eduquémonos. No permitamos más racismos. Nuestros niños van creciendo. Y qué decepción realmente escuchar esos comentarios allá afuera.
Momento.
Hello, my name is Annabella, and I'm here with ACE, and I'm a mother, and I'm disappointed by Nuri Martinez. Disappointed as a woman, because as a woman, we are the head of the household, and we have to educate our children. No more racism, please. And as leaders of this town, please, no more racism. We have to teach these to our kids.
Nuestra comunidad, nuestra comunidad latina necesita mejores representantes, y por eso tenemos que tener esa visualización de ahora en adelante, como tener, como escoger nuestros mejores representantes latinos. Gracias, que Dios los bendiga.
Gracias.
Our Latin community needs better representatives. Representatives that are visualized, that are better than the ones that we have. Thank you.
Okay, I had called Charles Zhu, Nancy Villanueva, and Henaro Leal.
My name is Charles Zhu. I'm an organizer for ACE in District 10. And I want to say this. I want to say that before Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, and Gil Cedillo said what they said in words, they and many of their colleagues, many of whom are still in front of me right now, said it in actions. They said it by passing the largest LAPD budget in history. They said it by passing 4118. They said it by ending tenant protections in this city when we are still in a state of emergency. They showed their contempt. They showed their contempt for all of us through actions. And you showed as well, Mitch, you should not be up there, because you personally ordered the fascist LAPD stormtroopers into Echo Park Lake in March 2021. And we still have not forgotten. Not only did those three members have to resign, but the entire structure they, they represent needs to be torn the fuck down. Get out now!
Here, we have Nancy Villanueva, followed by Henaro Leal, followed by David Q.
Muy buenas tardes. Yo estoy nombrado también. Mi nombre es Marcos Sanchez. Y necesito traducción. Pertenesco, soy miembro de ACE desde el 2013. Estoy con ellos, apoyándolos. Y yo, yo creo, de verdad, que ustedes tienen un cargo importante. Tienen las decisiones de nosotros como comunidad. Si nosotros no estamos aquí, ustedes hacen lo que hacen. Claro, no me refiero a todos.
Momento.
My name is Marcos Sanchez, and I'm here with ACE. Since 2013, I've been here supporting them, and I think that you guys have a very important post here.
Ahora, ahora, para ser breve, nada más les quiero decir, cuando nosotros hacemos algo mal, algo malo, y que nosotros nos llenamos de vergüenza, si ellos tienen una poca de vergüenza, Nuri, Kevin, y Gil, deberían de salir por donde entraron. Porque ellos no nos representan a nosotros. Ahora caemos en cuenta por qué tanta gente en la calle, porque ellos como, como consejo de la ciudad no han hecho su trabajo. Dejan que los dueños nos estén hostigando todo el tiempo sin deberles un solo centavo de renta.
Now, I'm here to say that when we do something wrong, we are riddled by shame. And now Nuri, Kevin, and Gil have to leave through the same door that they came in through. Now we know why there are so many people on the street, because they have not been doing their jobs, and why they let the owners harass us, the tenants.
Solo, solo para terminar. Como ustedes visten y como yo visto, no me define quién soy. La verdad, lo que nos define quiénes somos.
Gracias. Thank, thank you.
What I'm wearing and what you're wearing doesn't define who we are.
All right, Nancy Villanueva, followed by Henaro Leal, followed by David Q.
Hola, buenos días. Necesito traducción. Mi nombre es Nancy Villanueva, y estoy con la organización ACE. El día de hoy, estoy aquí para exigir dos cosas.
My name is Nancy Villanueva, and I'm here with ACE, and I'm here to demand two things.
Quiero que los racistas y clasistas, Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, Gil Cedillo, sean destituidos ahora por sus comentarios estúpidos.
I'm here to, to ask that the classist and racist Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, and Gil Cedillo leave now due to their stupid comments.
Número dos, queremos un... Número dos, queremos una extensión indefinida de la moratoria de desalojo para proteger a los inquilinos negros e indígenas que atacaron en su complot.
I'm also here to demand the indefinite extensions of the tenant protection for black and indigenous community that they did not help as part of their plot.
Y esto lo hicieron para quitarle el poder a nuestra gente angelina, a los negros, a los indígenas, y a nosotros los inquilinos.
And they did this to remove the power from us Angelinos, from the blacks and the indigenous and us, the people of Los Angeles.
Los queremos afuera ahora. Gracias.
We want them out now. Thank you.
Henaro Leal, followed by David Q, followed by Abby Robles. Henaro Leal, David Q, Abby Robles. Next, we have Sergio Vargas, Gina Viola, Sky Chang. Did, was your name called?
My name is Abby.
Abby Robles, please, go ahead.
Necesito traducción. Mi nombre es Abby, yo soy organizadora del Distrito 10 en el área de Los Ángeles. Vengo el día de hoy para decir que lo que hizo este individuo, Nuri, es una persona muy ignorante porque si ella se fija, se corta las venas y me las corto yo, tenemos el mismo, la misma sangre corre por nuestras venas. So es una mujer ignorante que se ha pasado el estudio por las nalgas.
Momento.
My name is Abby Robles and I'm here with District 10 and I'm an organizer in the LA area. And I'm here because what Nuri Martínez said was ignorant. Because if she cuts her veins, and I cut my veins, we still have the same blood running through. And she's just ignorant. And her education, she could rub it in her butt.
Es indignante porque si se ponen a pensar, todos somos hijos de Dios, todos somos iguales. No importa el color o la raza. So, hay un Dios que todo ve. Y pido, hoy yo no vengo a negociar porque es obvio que no venimos a negociar que corra esta gente así hoy. Venimos a exigir porque el pueblo es el que está hablando. Ustedes ya, su palabra de ustedes ya no vale.
Gracias.
I'm here with indignation because we're all children of God regardless of race or color. And I'm here to demand, because it's obvious we're not here to ask anymore, that you guys get rid of these people because we are the voice of LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergio Vargas, is Sergio Vargas here? No, followed by Gina Viola, you're next, followed by Sky Chang.
Congratulations. It took you 30 seconds to show everyone that you are not capable of running this show. Not at all. We want Mike Bonin up there for the remainder of this term. When we walk through the door today, there should have been three life-size posters of their resignations up for us to see. Are we still paying them? Are they getting paid today? That's despicable. 4118, repeal it today. It is clear that that is anti-black racism. That each and every one of you who put forth any 4118 addresses, you all need to resign next as well. Because your anti-blackness is on full display and it's coming out loud and clear. I am sorry for what happened to Mike Bonin, I'm sorry what happened to his child, what he had to live with and say, but let's be clear. That's how they talk all the time. And anyone else who is in the room with them is talking like that too. So that's what you need to start paying attention to. Who else is in the room with them? You are not my president, Mitch. Step down.
Sky Chang, followed by Brock Lee. Sky Chang, followed by Brock Lee, followed by Arnold Sacks, if Mr. Sacks is here. Sky Chang. Brock Lee. Arnold Sacks. Jason Reedie. Eric Brightwell. Arnold Sacks is here. Arnold, please take the floor if you would like to speak. Will be followed by Jason Reedie or Eric Brightwell or Billy Green. Those will be the next three names.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I signed up for several items. You continuously disregard the CEQA laws. You're gonna go green, you're not gonna go green. We're in the midst of the worst water shortage ever in the state of California. And yet you continue to build more high-rises. Why is that? You can't do both.
Which items did you want to speak on?
Mr. City Attorney, I'm speaking on the agenda. How's that sound?
Well, I don't think so.
It's hard to disappoint you.
So which items did you? Yeah, I think all the items that you wanted to speak on that could potentially involve CEQA were continued, which are 1416. So let's set you for a minute and then you can talk about anything in the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Please continue.
You just cut me out of three minutes. You bastard! Thank you very much, cocksucker! So, thank you. So anyway, all you need to do is spend a little time and pick up some of these booklets. They're all around. You can pick up a County Services Act. It says right here, Mark Ridley-Thomas does want to do away with the Affordable Care Act. Who came up with that? President Obama! Who was he? He was a black president!
Can you speak into the mic, Mr. Sacks?
He was a black president! Mark Ridley-Thomas, they had signed up 15,000 people at $1,000 a head. I went to a meeting, people came up to me and said, "You keep going after Mark Ridley-Thomas." He stole $660 million of federal funds. And he used it to build a fucking stadium in Las Vegas instead of helping homeless people. We have homelessness. We have, we have a Brown Act, we have LADOT Title IV. We have Metro has a different title.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Sacks. Thank you, Mr. Greenspan. Thank you. Next, we have Jason Reedie, followed by Eric Brightwell or Billy Green. Is Jason Reedie, Eric Brightwell, or Billy Green in the chambers? I think Mr. Reedie is up, so your turn.
So item 19 in public comment.
Sure, so item 19, we'll give you a minute and then we'll go for general public.
All right, so I'm also here with the blacks. It's 10:11, so fuck 12. The state of Ethiopia is currently engaged in a genocide in Tigray region. So to welcome this new ambassador into these chambers and illuminate City Hall the colors of Ethiopia is signing off on the war crimes they have committed. That's the main reason to vote against this. But besides that, every member of this council should be voting down any motion by KDL until he resigns. He has no place on this council. In fact, KDL, I know you're watching, there's no place like home. Did you see us outside your house yesterday? Didn't know that K in KDL stood for Kansas, you racist motherfucker. KDL's been anti-black longer than I've been alive. His apology read, "I regret appearing to condone and even contribute to certain insensitive comments" made about a colleague and his family in private. You seem to think that you're in trouble for talking about a colleague behind their back. No, you're in trouble for saying racist shit. You didn't appear to condone or contribute to these comments. You did condone and contribute to those comments. But don't worry, soon enough you'll have plenty of time to work on some new movie references, you fuck. Moving on to general comment. Justice in this bastion of Babylon is few and far between, but we have descended down these halls ripe with racism to demand the resignation of KDL, Gil, and Nuri. I'm here today as a black father to this black baby boy. Our black boys are robbed of their innocence, of their joy, and of their humanity on a daily basis. Black Thought recently put out a verse where he raps, "Black boy that grew into a blacker man." And you see all these black men in the crowd today that were once black boys. As black boys, we are painted as menaces to society, unruly and unintelligent. We are constantly dehumanized by people like Nuri who label us as monkeys and people like KDL who think that our lives are worth nothing more than a handbag. Society, including this council, would make us think that due to our melanin, we are malicious, but we are magnificent and magnetic. All right? Nuri felt it was her responsibility to provide a beat-down to a three-year-old black boy, but somehow it's not within her responsibility to resign. And so within 70 minutes, this trio of thinkers insulted every marginalized group in LA. And there's no coming back from that. So behalf on every black boy, black man, and black person, you need to resign, retire, and go to fucking hell.
Eric Brightwell, Eric Brightwell, followed by Billy Green, followed by Guillermo Torres.
Hi, Eric Brightwell, public comment. Martinez, DeLeón, and Cedillo don't need to resign. They need to be removed immediately and barred from ever holding elected office in this state ever again. It goes deeper than them, though. This whole body needs to be radically reformed. The casual racism and homophobia, the FBI indictments, the backstabbing, classism, and contempt for constituents. As someone who loves this city, I'm so upset with, disappointed by, and embarrassed by our city council. What we all heard sadly confirms what a lot of us have long suspected. That many of our public servants care only about remaining in office and retaining power and not about representing the interests of those who look different from them or who lack their power and wealth. There is currently too much power in too few hands. Los Angeles is home to 4 million people. It is the second-largest city in the country. It is by many measures the most diverse city in the world. Too large and too diverse to be adequately represented by any 15 people. Certainly too large and diverse to be represented by those who seek to divide us into the blacks, the whites, and the Latinos. And then pit us against one another.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Billy Green, followed by Guillermo Torres, followed by Donna Jones.
Good morning. My name is Billy Green. I'm former president of the Beverly Hills Hollywood NAACP. To Nuri Martínez, Gil Cedillo, Kevin DeLeón, I do not accept your apology. You said what you meant and you meant what you said. There is no apology needed. The three of you do not belong in leadership in this city. As a citizen of the city of Los Angeles, I believe you should resign ASAP your position as council members before you do more damage to this city. We need leaders who can bring this city together. Do not divide us. The redistricting for you was all about power and divide and conquer. More power for you and the community. That's what you were looking for, is more power and divide this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Guillermo Torres, followed by Donna Jones, followed by Hassan Zuniga.
Hello, my name is Guillermo Torres and I am an interfaith program director for clergy and leading United for Economic Justice. What has been exposed now is something that has been happening for many, many years. The disconnection of the dignity of other communities by the oppression of another community. Of people in power who have that responsibility. To him that much is given, much is required. They failed not only us, they oppressed not only the black community, but they have oppressed all of us as a human race. Many times we came before the city council to tell you about this, that this was happening. And I'm glad that it was a wake-up call for some of our labor partners too. All these construction sites, how many black workers do you see at a construction site? That's been going on for years. Sheriffs, Chicano gangs oppressing black communities. In the sheriffs, how long have they been oppressing black and brown communities? Right? So... The last... That those who were once embalmed in Egypt have become...
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Donna Jones, followed by Hassan Zuniga, followed by Christian Green.
Good afternoon now. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to thank Gil Cedillo, Nuri Martínez, and Kevin DeLeón for showing us your real face and making sure you'll never be anything else in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Hassan Zuniga, followed by Christian Green.
That's me. Hassan, I'm an organizer with ACE in South LA. I work with Latinos, Mexicans, Indigenous, and black people. Mark Chris knows, we have a lot of meetings on that. And I translate most of these meetings. And I work with this community. Last night, I spoke to them and they felt that this was something that they already knew in the community. They're aware that our politicians have those hidden meetings. It's embarrassing to see that. It's embarrassing too. The last year, we had to be doing public comments to know that we were fighting each other for districts in District 9 and District 8. They were embarrassed with the situation. They want an investigation on that. And also in District Ted, because we did hear that they were plotting to get somebody on their side, which is, we know their politician, that's what they're gonna do, but it's embarrassing that they got caught. Also, as we heard other colleagues in ACE, we want to make sure that the extensions of COVID-19 get extended even more because we knew their plans were to end it as soon as possible and they were with the corporate landlords. I mean, what else can I say? You need to resign. Kevin DeLeón, Nuri Martínez, and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Green, followed by Shion Smith, followed by Said Al-Hawari. Christian Green or Shion Smith or Said Al-Hawari? Audrey G? Is Audrey G. in the house? Thank you. All right, the floor is yours.
So until you have all three resignations tendered and accepted, this is an illegitimate body. We might as well, we're wasting our time. Not only illegitimate, but anti-black, a tool of the LAPD, anti- poor people, and anti-homeless. And I just want to end by saying that the worst part of that ugly, secret, backdoor Brown Act and civil rights violating meeting was that it was probably absolutely run-of-the-mill.
Audrey G? Oh, that was you, I'm sorry. We have Ramel, followed by Nikolai Itineer. Ramal, followed by Nikolai Itineer. Reverend Shane Harris. Reverend Radim Robinson. Dr. Jill Humphries? Oh, sir, your name, please.
Reverend Shane Harris.
Oh, yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Council, and you know, I just want to thank Councilmember Bonin. As a former adopted African-American child in foster care system, just want to thank you for taking that child in. I think it's imperative that all three of these council members resign as a national civil rights organization, the People's Association of Justice Advocates. That's the national civil rights group that I lead. I'm here to stand with the local activists and the local leaders in calling on all three of those council members to resign immediately, effective today, because they cannot handle the city's business. Secondly, I'm asking the state attorney general to investigate. I've already issued a letter to the state attorney general asking for an investigation of civil rights violations in that meeting. And I support the efforts of an independent redistricting commission. We did it in San Diego. It showed impact. And I think it's imperative that that happens here. So thank these local leaders and we call on this council to request the state attorney general to investigate, provide a civil rights investigation of these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Dr. Jill Humphries and Cliff Smith, followed by Mike Nguyen. Dr. Jill Humphries, followed by Cliff Smith.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Jill Humphries. I'm a native Los Angelina, a black Californian, and with the blacks. And who also stands in solidarity with Indigenous and Armenian LGBTQ communities. Humanity, basically. I stand before you as one of our professors and cultural ambassadors representing US higher education, educational exchange programs, where I taught in both Ethiopia and South Africa, just recently returning. As a professor of public administration, where I teach democracy, right? Part of our public policy or foreign policy, supposedly, we are the beacons of democracy. The actions of our city council members and labor union president is beyond the pale. It undermines the work many of us are engaged to create a more accountable and representative local government, and also humanity and world. And it's hypocritical. You're the case study that I'll be using to illustrate in the US that we are an emerging democracy still. Right? So when I go back within the next year to African universities and working with local policy people and students, I'm gonna use this as the model case study. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Cliff Smith? If you hold for just one quick moment, I want to make sure that I didn't miss Reverend Radim Robinson. No? Yes? Okay. So Reverend Robinson was actually before you. Mr. Smith, if you wouldn't mind holding for just a moment. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Radim Robinson. I bring you greetings as the minister of social justice from the AME Zion Church where we, we're the church with the blacks. So, very simple. I get tired of politicians talking about Black Lives Matter this and Black Lives Matter this and that. But meanwhile, we have people on this city council who are conspiring to disseminate... to disenfranchise black voters. I've got a problem with that. And so I am hoping that this city council will hold Sadio, DeLeon, and Martinez accountable, and we are asking for full resignations, not no half-assed resignations. We are asking for full resignations and in a full investigation. I do believe that open meeting laws were violated. As a former school board member in Arizona, I know for effect, open meeting laws were violated. So I ask that this council will do the right thing and say Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Cliff Smith, will be followed by Mike Gwen, followed by Reverend William Smart.
Cliff Smith, I'm the business manager of the Roofers and Waterproofers Union Local 36 in Los Angeles. We represent hundreds of the hardest-working construction workers across the city, many of them Wahakan, many of them immigrant, many of them African-American. As the union representative, we add our voice to all the organizations that are here today to demand the immediate resignation of council members Martinez, Sadio, and DeLeon. We do not want to see these people back in this building ever again. Councilmember Martinez, you are a coward and a punk to put in for a leave of absence and not show up today to face your constituents. Do not come back. Take your permanent leave of absence and do not show your face anymore in this building. Roofers Local 36, we've taken care of our business at the L.A. County Labor Federation. This body needs to take care of its business and make sure that these three people are excommunicado in this building.
Mike Gwen, followed by the Reverend William Smart, followed by Dewey.
Good afternoon, honorable council members. The corum being set, my name is Mike Gwen. I'm a board member of the National Association of Black Social Workers, local member, several organizations, but I'm also a board member of Park Mason Neighborhood Council. And so, what's already been said and understood, I'm not going to repeat that. The reality is, what do we do after this? And not just relegate it to our three, those three individuals who are Hispanic, I'm talking about the whole council. And the reason I say that, I worked for L.A. County for 25 years. The black and brown individuals did the same thing. You know, we all trade barbs with each other. Not just brown, it's black, too, but the reality is that they got caught slipping. So let's, by extension, just make sure we clean house. Beyond the resignations, we need to make sure that there's other protocols in place to make sure it doesn't happen again. Now, you respect the position, but sometimes that person is very hard to respect in doing their job. Outside of that, what we do outside of our homes also reflects on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Reverend William Smart, followed by Dewey, followed by Andres M.
My name is Pastor Smart, and as many of you know, I represent the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California that was founded by Dr. Martin Luther King. And so there is a quorum I have to bring to every meeting as I represent him. Right now, our community is bleeding, but I want to thank, I'm going to take a different angle. I want to thank those three council persons and the Labor Federation, because they have caused unity in this community like I have never seen before. Blacks, African-Americans, Latinos, Asian Pacific Islanders are coming together. And so the warning is to you, you don't, we just heard what was on the tape, but there was an attitude that caused this. They had a mindset of taking over and being in charge, and so I warn you, if you don't handle your business, the community is going to handle the business.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Dewey, followed by Andres M., followed by Sunflower A.
I'm Dewey. I'm also with the blacks. Shame on all of you. Resign and make room in those seats for the people who are a reflection of this community. Not money-hungry, power-chasing, paper-chasing, evil racists, who are even racist towards their very own, but the real black and brown people who make up the majority of the population in the City of Los Angeles, California. Apologies are not enough. You must resign. There is no other option. There is no excuse. You have not only been exposed as to what we have always assumed you to be, racist, the world got to see who you really are. Many were complicit as well, who are up here today. Aren't you embarrassed? This is embarrassing. You take money from your own, you watch your own live on the streets, and you kill your own. You lean so closely to white supremacy, I'm happy to tell you, you are white supremis. White supremacy comes in many shades. You are the spectrum. Nuri, Kevin, Gil, Mitch, baby Eric Garcetti, and many others should be embarrassed for the shame that you put on your ancestors. Resign. You are not fit for this work. Blew, no matter who...
Thank... Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Sunflower A., followed by Mike S. Sunflower A., followed by Mike S.
I'd just like to come here to tell you all that I would never want someone like a racist, tia, or tio, because we all know, we have these family members who have these conversations at their dinner tables and their grocery stores, and I would never want them to sit in that body, where you sit there right there, Mitchell Farrell. This is atrocious. We should not have people who are racist, anti-Indigenous, anti-black, colorist, classist. Everything in the book was in that tape, and those seats should remain empty forever. Sadio, Leon, Nuri will never set foot in this body, and you guys need to move a motion to remove them if they don't resign. Period. Today!
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sunflower. Um, sorry, I have epilepsy, so it might take me a minute. First, I just want to say, it was a miracle that I made it into this city hall. A miracle. There are hundreds of people outside banging on the fucking door and seeing Mitch. Oh, let's talk about Echo Park, Mitch, and how you hate unhoused people, and how nobody got housing, because my mom works in homeless services, and unfortunately, she met Nuri? Nuri. She met Nuri, and she told me, this is Nuri. This wasn't a slip-up. This is her. Okay, and that's the only conversation we've heard. How many of you sitting on this council right now have had those closed-door talks, fucking racist, bigoted? You are a disgrace. None of you represent the people of Los Angeles. You never have. It's clear. 2020, we were begging for the police to be defunded into the community. Fuck the police and fuck this city council. You're a disgrace.
And I believe we already heard from Mike S. Mike S. we already heard from. I have no other speakers in the queue. Richie, did you fill out a comment card?
Yeah. You have one minute, one minute to...
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. I put my name in as Richie earlier in the meeting, and you haven't called on me yet. So two seconds ago, I just put Mike S. in, so thank you for finally calling on me. I want to say that the things that we heard on the tapes, this is just city hall culture. I mean, you all exhibit anti-black behavior. Paul Coretts, he just put out an attack ad attacking a 20-year-old black kid named Simbalal, a youth activist for the Kenneth Mahia campaign, and Paul, you attacked him and said he was a dangerous black male. So that anti-black behavior, it...
I understand. Yeah. All white people are racist, and this... Yeah, racism exists in this world, and you all perpetuate it. Rich, Mitch, you might be the worst one.
All right, so that completes our public comment. I want to thank everyone for coming in today and offering the remarks. Did you fill out a card as well? Please give us your name. Okay, so we never called you up your name again?
I'm here.
Nick, go right ahead. You have...
All right. The comments that came to light this weekend are disgusting, but they also point to an ecosystem of racism and disrespect and the bad action of it. It is only more infuriating that Kevin DeLeon and Gil Sadio decided to come in today and sit before us, the people, without their resignations in hand. Members of this council have called for the resignation of all the involved individuals. I further call on you to pressure them by refusing to conduct city business until Nuri Martinez, Kevin DeLeon, and Gil Sadio resign from their positions representing the people of this city. Nor are they the only council members guilty of anti-black behavior, and those three resignations will not be sufficient to restore the confidence of Angelinos.
Thank you, Speaker. All right, let's proceed with the meeting. And if everyone could please take a seat so we can proceed with the meeting today. All right, so we shall continue. Colleagues, we just heard everyone in public comment express the outrage and anger and hurt. This council must grapple with devastating transgressions by three of our colleagues that were brought to light and the deep wounds and suffering their actions have caused to the people of Los Angeles and to members of this body. These transgressions must be confronted and dealt with. I, for one, am hurt, angry, and sad. I join all of you in those emotions. As we continue to process this, let's take stock of this city, and we, as an elected body, have faced in recent years not just a global pandemic, or a movement for social justice and equity, or the crises of homelessness and housing, but a series of scandals that have rocked this chamber. These past episodes have already deepened, damaged the public trust, and have already jeopardized our ability to do our duty on behalf of those we serve. And now this, a moment unlike any other. What we do now, and in the immediate days and weeks to come, will be pivotal. And colleagues, we can, we will, and we must meet this moment. The casual racism, the abhorrent language, the dehumanizing racist reference describing a child, a black child, and the son of a colleague, the denigration of Indigenous peoples, which we just celebrated last night at Grand Park Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the Wahakan community was there and strong and in force, the familiar tropes against LGBTQ+ individuals, insulting words describing an Armenian-American, the clear abuse of power, carving up the city for pure political gain, the notion that giving renters a greater voice in their government is somehow wrong, profoundly unbecoming and profoundly unacceptable. Colleagues, at this critical and devastating moment, I'm here to affirm, there is no place for this. There are no excuses, not in this chamber, not as a member of this body, not in this building, not in this city, not in the year 2022, not ever. Councilmember Bonin, you and I are the only LGBTQ members of this council. I was at you and Sean's wedding. You have a beautiful son and a beautiful family. And in many communities, including the one we both belong to, we build our families. That is a big part of our culture. Your family is an inspiration to all of us, all people, including me and my partner George. My heart, our hearts are with you, Sean, and your family at this time. You deserved better. We deserve better. The people of Los Angeles deserve better. I do not believe, I do not believe we can have the healing that is necessary or govern as we need to while council members Martinez, DeLeon, and Sadio remain as members of this council. I say those words with a heavy heart, but this is a heavy and a deeply tragic moment for this city. The court of public opinion has rendered a verdict, and the verdict is, they all must They need to consider what is best for the city and the people of Los Angeles. That is the only consideration. They must ask themselves, what will be their role to help us heal? And can that healing happen if they remain around this horseshoe? And I believe it cannot. In the coming days, there is an enormous amount of business to attend to. I preside before you today as acting city council president, but I state unequivocally, I have no interest in seeking the council president myself. I had no ambition to be a president pro tem, but I answered the call to serve, as I have always done. My only motivation then and now is to be a public servant, and as I sit before you now, presiding in this capacity, in my role, it is to help us get through this moment and help set us on a path to stability and to healing. To that end, today, I introduced a motion that calls for the election of a new permanent council president next Tuesday, October 18th. The work of my life is public service, and my job now is to help us heal and move forward. But while I do serve in this temporary capacity, I also believe that part of my job at this juncture is to ensure we reform the way we do business on this council. The comments at the center of this storm came from a discussion on redistricting. They stemmed from business that was before this council at the time these recordings were made a year ago, and if we are to regain the trust and faith of Angelinos, we need to make some big changes. Today, I introduced a motion that calls for major reform of the city charter, the city council, and how we approach redistricting representation, the topics at the center of this crises. The size of this city council has been 15 members since 1925, when the City of Los Angeles had just under 1 million people. Today, we are a diverse metropolis of 4 million, and this council should reflect and represent the residents we serve. A ballot measure that increases the number of council seats will help us meet that goal and involve Angelinos in the process, as will an immediate redistricting process should the people decide they want an expanded city council. Tomorrow, before this council, we will consider another proposed ballot measure, one that calls for an independent redistricting commission for the normal process we undertake every 10 years to determine council boundaries. This will be another opportunity for us to ensure that we restore a sense of transparency, trust, and faith that Angelinos deserve to have in their government. This is indeed a moment of crises, but it is also an opportunity to demand and receive accountability and to make some structural changes that make our city government better. But in order to be better, we need to do better, and that starts right now, right here. Los Angeles is a special and unique place. We love this city. It is beautiful because of its diversity. It is beautiful because of the diversity of people and cultures that live here and who come here to build a better life. It is beautiful because it is a city of dreamers and doers, of creatives and creators, and it is a place that people are drawn to because they can hope, and they can imagine, and they can believe in stories and ideas and ideals that are bigger than themselves. This moment is bigger than all of us, and we are the legislative body that sets the direction for this city. It is the privilege of a lifetime and a responsibility that defines us, never more so than in this very moment. This is the city of angels, and this moment requires us to appeal to the better angels of our nature that reside within all of us. We must confront the violations of trust, integrity, professionalism, and confidence that are before us, and we must demand better. We must demand action, and we must deliver change. And if we do those things, I am confident we can move forward into a brighter future for the city we love and for the people we serve. And I thank you for that. And I'm going to call upon Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. I just want to address the members of the public. For the obvious betrayal that was exposed, it wounded everyone. No one was spared in the despicable remarks and acts that were conducted by three colleagues on this council and the head of the County Federation of Labor. For me, as the daughter of Mexican immigrants, as someone who represents a community that has been betrayed and is... has been betrayed and is... This is not reflective of who our community is, of the hard-working people who have sacrificed, who have struggled to make it in this country, to afford us the very privileges that we are all afforded today. And so with that, colleagues, just felt it was very important to be perfectly clear, because I've said it many times, there is no excuse, there is no room for the behavior that was exhibited, and I demand that my colleagues resign from this council so that we can continue to build the trust for the people and begin the healing that we need here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Seeing as there are no other speakers on the queue, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
Approval of the minutes of October 7, 2022.
All right. Councilmember Rodriguez moves. Councilmember Roman seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Bonin moves. Councilmember Blueenfield seconds next.
The council may now vote on items 11 through 13, 17, 19, 20, 22, and 22 through 26.
Those items shall now be voted on. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next, open the roll. Please go ahead.
Thank you. The council may now vote on item 18.
Thank you. We may vote on item 18. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
8 ayes, 2 noes.
Thank you. Let's move to the closed session items, and I would like to refer to Mr. Krikorian, our Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 27 through 33 are matters that were considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. These are routine matters that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item 34 was not considered by Budget and Finance. It was referred to Housing, which, to my understanding, that the Chair of the Housing Committee waived that matter, and that matter can also be taken up in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Madam Clerk, would you please read the settlement announcements, or amounts, rather?
Thank you. For item 27, in the case entitled "Halloweeno, Marokin Guzman et al. versus Elise Zola Marshall et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. In the case entitled "Josue R. Gastelum, Campista et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $650,000 in settlement. In the case, for item 29, in the case entitled "Armando Sandoval versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $155,000 in settlement. For item 30, in the case entitled "Joanna Aguilar et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $225,000 in settlement. For item 31, in the case entitled "Lillian Woodfin Parker versus City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $575,000 in settlement. For item 32, in the case entitled "Fafi Y. Meron versus City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. For item 33, in the case entitled "Paul O. et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in settlement. I defer to the city attorney for item 34.
Thank you. For item 34 involving Superior Court cases, 1516 Hobart LLC versus City and Paloma Partnership v. City, the city attorney recommendation is to request the city attorney's office to prepare and present an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section 151.03 to alter the qualifications for rent adjustment commissioners serving on the Housing Appeals Board for the Los Angeles Housing Department to meet the criteria set forth in the California Building Code. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Clerk, I believe we are now prepared to vote on the settlement items 27 through 34. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what is next on the agenda?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred, and what do we have now?
The desk is clear.
Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Announcements? Please, all in the chamber, rise for adjourning motions. And do we have any adjourning motions today? Any adjourning motions on either side of the horseshoe? Seeing as there are none, let's get through this moment. Let's move past this. Let's transcend this difficulty. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and God bless.
... structure. I would imagine that, you know, walls, floors, plumbing, electrical, everything has to be, you know, maintained for, especially in a house that is so dramatically unique. I mean, I would, coming in and trying to figure things out to begin with, and then actually making sure that the restoration is accurate and appropriate for the original thought. How kind, what kind of research do you have to do to make sure that everything is true to the original intent?
So for Residence A., it's really a comprehensive restoration project. There'd been previous seismic work done, but we had to add additional stabilization. There's a wonderful double-height living room in that structure, and that building was quite different than Holly Hawk House in that it hadn't received kind of the restorations over time. And so in many ways, a lot of the material was so well-preserved, it kind of built up layers, having just been used as an art center, that we have been able to uncover a lot of original fabric. So I think it will be really a revelation for our visitors. So it's really exciting, and we're now working on the interior finishes as well.
Okay, so back to the Holly Hawk House. What are some of the highlights that people can't miss when they have the opportunity to be here? Everything besides.
Everything. Everything should be seen here. Here at Holly Hawk House, with the pandemic, we were able to rethink our tour route in significant ways. So for this house that Frank Lloyd Wright described...